Welcome. I'd like to call to order the October 6th, 2015 meeting of the Board of Education of Fairfield. Present is Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Ponfettito, Mr. Fadabene, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, and Mr. Llewellyn. Mr. Patton said that he would be a few minutes late, but we do expect him, and I assume we also expect Mrs. Lou McCormick. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I, I'm sorry, I should have asked you to stay standing. Some of you know that our first selectman, Mike Tetro, had a younger brother, has a younger brother who served two tours in Iraq and safely returned, but over the weekend passed away rather suddenly and without, you know, any indication. So I'd ask if we could have a moment of silence to give our prayers to his family and to Mr. Tetro in particular. Moment of silence. We have a couple of, I'll say, presentations that may generate some discussion, specifically the Holland Hill facility. We specifically put this on the agenda so that we could address the immediate needs of Holland Hill. I think most of the parents know that they're scheduled up next in terms of facility development, but there's a certain amount of time that it takes to move a facility through the approval process, the design process, and construction and whatnot, and there are clearly some immediate needs. And so we put it on as a discussion item so that we could hear from parents who have a focus on the immediate needs of Holland Hill. We will also hear a report from the redistricting advisory committee, but that is not a discussion item, it's a report from the committee. But clearly, there's interest in the redistricting issue as well, so we will calendar that for discussion on the October 20th meeting, so that people who have an interest in that, that we won't be dividing time among the board to try and address both important issues all in one meeting. So tonight really is focused on the immediate needs of Holland Hill, and then we'll calendar the October 20th for any redistricting comments people make, may wish to make. In your three minutes, if you happen to use the word "redistricting," I'm not going to gavel you out of order, but I do hope that you will focus on the immediate needs of Holland Hill because the board has an interest in hearing the perspective of parents on that. We have two groups. Oh, and for the board members to take note, there is a set of minutes at your table, which is draft two of the minutes. I think somebody's name was inadvertently left off the minutes in terms of attendance or something, so look at the table and draft, you'll see a little number two next to the draft. That is the minutes that we'll be voting on. So make note of that when we get to that on the agenda item. We have, both high schools have given us two new students to keep us up to date on the activities of our two high schools, and so we welcome you here and to each meeting of the board, and look forward to hearing from you throughout the school year, since Fairfield Ward is shown on the agenda, but Ludlow students are here as well. And so Ashley Agrello, right, and Brittany Schuster is here, and then from Ludlow, Isabella Frango is here, and then Mahir Nene is here. So since Ward was typed on the agenda, why don't we have Ward students go first and bring us up to date?
Okay, hi, I'm Brittany Schuster. So this summer, before school started, we did the freshman tours for all of the incoming freshmen. About 400 freshmen showed up, and it was a really good turnout. We helped them get comfortable with the school and chilled them around, so they were more comfortable with going to their classes. We also initiated the block scheduling this year. It's way more efficient than what we had before. It gives us more time in class to focus, and also everyone now has a lunch, which before we did not. The open house, we did that towards the beginning of the school year. It was a really good turnout. The parents got to meet all the teachers and got to find out what we're going to be doing. The PSATs we're doing next Wednesday, so everyone's getting ready for that. We're all studying. We got study guides from the school, and we also have assigned class time for studying. And also, college visits have been coming. That's very, very helpful, and we kind of get a feel of what they're like, which is also good. And the College and Career Center is a really good resource. A lot of people use it, and the colleges are well advertised. Colleges like Marist, Dartmouth, Harvard, Hartford, Boston, they all visited, so it was, it's a really good experience to get to go to them.
Hi, I'm Ashley Agrello. I'm the second Ward representative. To elaborate on the Dartmouth College presentation, both Brittany and I attended, and it seems like it has a lot of potential. It really allows students to get to know what the school is like. We ask the college admissions officer a lot of personal questions, and they answer very in-depth, which gives us really good insight. I want to start off with introducing the athletic season. Our football, cross-country soccer teams are doing very well. We started off the year with two home games. Moving on, this Friday, we have an upcoming pep rally to prepare for the homecoming dance that is this Saturday, and I have been hearing a lot of positive feedback from my friends Next, we had picture day recently, which was really fun because I got to see a lot of people getting into it and getting dressed up. It was really nice. Also, September 17th, we had the summer reading book chats. A lot of people participated, which was very nice to see. We also had the raffle to see who was more, who participated more, really. And it's a good motivation for the students to really speak out and like tell us what their ideas were about the books that they read. And I would like to give a shout out to the deputy superintendent, Mrs. Parks, and Mrs. Munsell for attending. Thank you. And finally, we have had our first activity periods, as well as the advisory period, in which we explained how the activity periods worked to the freshmen, which have been switched to Wednesdays instead of Tuesdays, unlike last year. Tomorrow, we'll be doing the first B-Week Club, which we are very excited to start. Thank you.
Any questions for our Ward representatives? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
Just one quick question. A Ward student had gotten in touch with me regarding the Wi-Fi at Ward and how that's working out with whatever new arrangements have been made. I was wondering what your experience has been with that.
My personal experience is, in some parts of the building, the Wi-Fi isn't as great as, say, let's say, the library, in which it's really good because of all the computers there. It doesn't work the best with apps, which I suppose is beneficial because, you know, a lot of students will use Snapchat, Instagram, basically social media during class. But I, myself, I will admit, I'm a victim of that. So yeah, other than that, it's better than last year than having a central Wi-Fi system, one for just the kids who bring their own devices. I think it's beneficial. Brittany, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Patton.
Yeah, I tried to download Infinite Campus when I was at that open house, and I couldn't, no, I'm kidding. How, I'll ask the Ludlow students the same question. In your opinion, I know you mentioned it briefly, how is the new block schedule working for you guys in terms of, you've been there for three years without it, and now you've got a different schedule?
Personally, I like it better because it gives us more time in class, so when we're really into something, we don't have to stop it right when we get into it, like with labs in physics. It allows us to have more time to ask questions and to talk about whatever we're learning so we don't have to abruptly leave the class, so we have more time to do things.
I find personally, in my U.S. history class, some teachers are trying to find how much work will fill up the time and how much work, you know, is too much. And we're all getting along very well with it. I think we're all adjusting very well, and I do find that it's beneficial, like what Brittany said. It gives us more time to focus. Rather than last year, we had to switch from class to class, which didn't exactly help with our understanding of what was in the class, because, you know, we, there were, there was every class in one day. So it also helps with studying and homework. If you're using the time efficiently like some of us, instead of procrastinating, you know, it helps with study tips, study habits, developing good habits at home.
Thanks. Anything else? Let's move on to Ludlow.
Hi, I'm Mahir. As you know, over the summer, there were renovations at Fairfield-Ludlow High School, and the cafeteria has been expanded, and a wing has been extended as well. And the cafeteria's been extended to accommodate the extra students that'll be in it because of the new schedule with the lunch waves, and I think that it's working very well. It comfortably seats all the students in each lunch wave. I haven't heard of any issues with that. And I think the expansion of the wing is also very helpful to the teachers and the students because it has more classrooms and more labs for the students, which is important, and it makes the teachers not have to share rooms as much or switch rooms as often, so they can keep all their materials in one place and they can be more effective. And with the renovations, there has, there's a new senior lounge and a new student store as well, and those are both very nice spaces. And I know Mr. Hatzis is going to be talking to the senior class officers to further improve the student lounge, the senior student lounge. Also, with the renovation, they added another router to the extension, and that's made the Wi-Fi, especially in the basement, much better. It's a significant improvement. There's a great deal going on at Ludlow, aside from the renovations, of course. The fall sports are in full swing. Girls' soccer won a game yesterday against Staples. And while the turnout isn't where I'd like it to be personally yet, I think that our, we have a core group of students who are really supportive of all our sports teams, and they definitely make it to all the events, in rain or shine. So the Ludlow senior class officers are also working on the graduation gowns and the spirit days. And so they're trying something new this year, which I'm excited for. They're going to try coming up with new spirit days perhaps. And aside from that, seniors are also in the midst of college application season, which is, as you know, a very stressful time of year for many students. You have to juggle the coursework of your classes, you have to juggle the extracurriculars that you're participating in, and the college applications. And I think the guidance counselor's offices and Mrs. Gorman and the College and Career Center have done a very good job of helping the students with this process. They've made a lot of resources available. They have the college visits, which are great because you can see what a college is all about, and you can talk to some real admissions officers, which I think is really important because, especially like if you're the first to be applying, you really don't have an idea of what the process is like, and so this gives you a feel for the process. And to that end, the counselor's offices and the College and Career Center have organized workshops on the PSAT Administration Day for the seniors, and I think many of the seniors will take advantage of that opportunity. I know there was a little bit of confusion with that because they had offered three choices to the seniors for what to do on that day, and so I think that it's been resolved and people will take the advantage of the opportunity that's been presented. And I think the first month of schools overall is just going very well at Ludlow, and if anything, the only thing I've heard a slight complaint about is the new food policy, but I understand the reason for that.
Hi, I'm Isabella. I'm the other student representative for Ludlow, and I'm also going to talk about the block schedule. I think the students were pleasantly surprised by the switch because I know there was definitely, they were a little hesitant for it, since we've spent three years with that specific schedule. I feel that students are finding that in this class time, there's a lot more opportunity for hands-on activities, and last year, they felt that the 45-minute classes were more lectures, so now they're being given more opportunities from their teachers, which I think they're enjoying. And teachers have been able to make the curriculum fun as well as easy due to this extra time and having more opportunity to explain things in a new depth to the students. And of course, everyone really appreciates that they have a lunch now, but there is a concern with the first lunch wave because it is at 10:39 in the morning, so students are often in the library, which kind of stinks since we just added the new cafeteria addition. But other than that, students are enjoying the lunch waves. And a common suggestion was that since the schedule is new, students would appreciate if teachers allowed for just a small break at the half point of each block, just so they can refocus and bring their best foot forward in the class. And other than the new schedule, next week, as spoken about earlier, sophomores and juniors will be taking the PSAT on a Wednesday, which I find to be better than past years when it was on a Saturday. I think the sophomores and juniors will be able to actually take the test now. As in past years, sometimes, you know, sports gets in the way, juniors may be doing college tours on a Saturday, so that's an advantage. And also, the freshmen are going to be participating in school climate surveys, which are always helpful. And the seniors, I, like Mahir stated, will be taking advantages of shadowing at jobs and touring schools, having interviews at schools, which I think is a great opportunity for us to take advantage of. And last week, Ludlow had the activity fair, and I think it was a huge success, especially of how it's been going in the past years. There's been a lot of new clubs created that's gathered in a lot of new freshmen and even new upperclassmen, I've noticed. And I've found that the upperclassmen especially have been trying to take on new roles in these new clubs. They're trying to be volunteers, leaders, tutors, and I just think it's a big improvement from the result of activity fairs in the past.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our Ludlow students? Ms. Carnell.
Thank you for that update. Most of the kids that I've spoken with, the students, are in favor of the new schedule, not 100%, but most. How has it been in terms of moving between the classes? Because the timeframe has stayed the same, and yet the school seems to be extended. So I know if you have one class up there and the gym there, it's impossible. So has that been, you know?
I personally haven't found it to be a massive problem at the school. A lot of the teachers are very considerate as well. If you say, oh, I got out of gym late, I got out of this class late, they understand. But other than that, I think having passing time the same has been working well.
What is it, three minutes, four minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
I concur with Isabella.
To change into gym gear. You guys, you know, that doesn't give you a lot of time. That's why I was just wondering, especially if you're on the other side of the school.
I think that unless you're like in gym and going to the opposite corner of the school, the timeframe is pretty generous for passing between classes. I don't think that's been really a problem.
They're faster than we are.
Yeah, because on open night, there wasn't one parent that would have made it from one end of that school to the gym in five minutes.
Mr. Patton.
Just quickly, you mentioned the activity fair. Is that, are those the during-school time activities, or are those the after-school activities?
Those are the activities that take place. Every Wednesday, we have a block for an activity, so it switches off from A and B, so it's during the school day.
So I guess just quickly back to the Ward students. Do you guys also have an activity fair, or is it more of an open, is it done the same way?
No, we have more of an activity list. We have time allotted after homeroom for the clubs and for the activities that the students are signed up for. It does alternate like at Ludlow between A and B, but we also incorporate advisory period into this. We don't have a specific block. I'm not sure how long it lasts at Ludlow. Ours, I think, this year is about half an hour.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you guys for the overview. Real quick question about the schedule. You said that some of you folks have a brunch rather than a lunch. Are you able to move between, say, the library, back and forth to the cafeteria, or are you, do you have that flexibility?
It's an, it can happen. We just have the pass system, obviously, and I know that the underclassmen aren't allowed to leave the cafeteria, and the seniors, if you are leaving the cafeteria, you need to be meeting a teacher, having a specific reason for being at the library, not just meeting with your friends. So it is possible for upperclassmen more than the underclassmen.
So do you get to choose where you get to go, and you have to stay put, or do you have to go to one or the other? In other words, for lunch, can you go to the library instead, or do you have to go to the cafeteria?
Yes, you can. It's just you can't start at the lunchroom and then choose to go to the, to the library.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we always invite you to stay for the entire meeting, but we take no offense if you need to go off and do other things. So thank you very much for coming. We'll see you at the next meeting. It's now time for public comment. Public comment on voting items take place at the time the vote takes place, but public comment on discussion items, which tonight would be the Riverfield Building Report, Holland Hill, and where am I, the budget ideas. So those of you who wish to make comments on the discussion items and then be able to get home are welcome to do it at the beginning of the meeting. Those who may want to wait and hear what the board discussion is and then make your comments afterwards, you're welcome to do that as well. What you can't do is speak both at the beginning of the meeting on this, and that, when the item comes up for the discussion on the same topic, speak a second time. So choose which of the two places that you want to be. In terms of Holland Hill, you may want to see what ideas Dr. Title has to address it so that you could respond to that, but you're welcome to do in either one. Some of you seem to be here for the first time in terms of public comment. We do stay with the no more than three minutes, because I don't have any way of saying, well, why did you let that person go forward and this person too and whatnot? So please try and confine your comments to no more than three minutes. We don't have any particular orders, so who wishes to come first?
Apparently, I do. Good evening. I apologize for the computer, but that's where my notes are. Good evening. Trudy Darrell, 64 Woodcrest Road in Fairfield, but tonight I am representing the Holland Hill PTA. On behalf of the Holland Hill PTA, I would first like to thank you very much for voting on the long-range facilities plan in June that has Holland Hill next on the schedule for renovations. As I am sure by now you are well aware, the overcrowding issues that were brought up last year and the year before have gone well beyond critical mass this year. We would like to ask that the Board of Ed continue to support Holland Hill and move the project forward as quickly as possible. To that end, we would also ask that the Board of Ed revisit and amend the long-term facilities plan to make Holland Hill's renovation a 504-capacity project rather than a 462. The last five years, from 2010 to 2014, 15, saw a 23% increase in enrollment, approximately 75 students over the projected enrollments. If that trend were to continue in the Holland Hill area, then by 2019, 2020, that school year, Holland Hill will increase to an enrollment over 475, which would be over capacity of 462 within one year after the renovation were to be completed. Finally, we ask that the Ed specs, excuse me, Ed specs be created and a building committee be formed now rather than January or even later. Thank you very much for your time, and as a quick aside, I would like to point out that Isabella Frango, who spoke tonight, is a Holland Hill grad.
Thank you very much. Who wishes to come forward? Please state your name and address.
We come together.
Yes, of course. You're doing a three-minute presentation tag team.
We're speaking, we're speaking jointly. My name is Robin Bilata, 100 Marsh Drive.
I'm Lori Branscombe, 117 Pemburn Drive. Robin and I are here tonight to formally submit the petition, Holland Hill Needs Space, to you tonight with 466 signatures. We started the petition because we, as parents, were simply watching and talking. We watched and talked as year after year our neighborhood school grew in number. We felt we had earned a big win this past June when our renovation was voted through as next in line. But what did that mean for the short term? Where were our students going to physically sit? We joked that we could park them on the roof or on the soccer field, but when the laughter stopped, we were left scratching our heads. Mr. Noyes, our music teacher, gave up his portable a few days before the start of school when the third grade needed another classroom. Mrs. Stastrom, our ever-smiling media specialist, was already pushing a library cart full of books or laptops to classrooms when her library was being used for testing. Ms. Seehy, Holland Hill's art teacher, was just a few students away from giving up her art room to a fourth section of kindergarten. The fourth and fifth graders, having no dedicated orchestra space, were being taught strings on the stage of the cafeteria during lunch. Unlike many of the elementary schools in town, we had no dedicated OTPT space. These specialists and kids were forced to meet in the hallway. We had no science lab or technology center, but our kids were expected to compete with others in town for high test scores. We watched and talked as our neighborhood school was no longer able to house the entire neighborhood. So we decided to stop watching and talking, and we did something. Not only did we need a long-term renovation, but we also faced a desperate need for immediate space, or at least an answer to when and how urgently our renovation could begin. We submitted the petition late the night of September 22nd in the hopes of starting the conversation and raising awareness of our overcrowding situation. We needed to rally support for our children, who couldn't fight for themselves, and for our teachers and administrators, who were continuing to do their jobs and care for our kids as best they could under the circumstances. We were unprepared for the overwhelming support we received. By the time Holland Hill's bell rang at eight the next morning, we had over 100 signatures. By noon, we saw 200, and that number doubled by the fourth day. We heard from fellow Holland Hill parents, graduates, teachers, town officials, and politicians, art, music, and media specialists from neighboring towns, and members of the Fairfield community who all feel that our kids' education should come before all else. Board of Ed members reached out and showed up in an evening meeting at our school. If nothing else, the petition gave us a voice and an opinion that people heard. We aren't naive to the reality that a 504 renovation is an arduous process, but we do know it can and must happen as quickly as possible for our kids and teachers. We are through watching and talking, and we now know that we are not alone in our convictions.
I hate to stop you at the end of that sentence, but if you have a petition that you want to hand in, just give it to our clerk so that we can make it part of the meeting.
Just want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Gregory Jackson. I live at 61 Longview Avenue. So I'm a historian by trade, and I spend a little bit of time looking at the Board of Education books since 1981 through now, and I just wanted to put out there that the population increase from 1981 to 2010 has gone up every single year. 1981 to 2010 has gone up every single year with the exception of four years, those years being 1983, 1984, 2009, and 2010. In all other situations, the enrollment at the kindergarten level has increased, so I would implore you to consider the urgency of this matter, having not already been dealt with in previous decades. The second issue with respect to Holland Hill, and piggybacking on what my fellow residents said, was I'm highly concerned about the issue of OT and PT in the hallway, not just because of school safety issues, but also about the confidentiality of each individual student who has an IEP, which guarantees their rights to be, have, you know, privacy in that regard. And then finally, I'm really concerned about asking our faculty, which are outstanding, and our staff, which are outstanding, to work under conditions that might not very well be safe for them. To this point, having put in a call with the fire marshal, I still have not received an exact, precise number of the number of occupants that are legally allowed to be in that school. And my, my question would be, once we're at overcapacity for classrooms, at what point does that not become a fire hazard? And so I would urge the board to consider about questions of equity with respect to the other schools in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have another tag team doing together for three minutes.
I'm here in support, but I would reserve my right to comment after the discussion.
Hi, Lisa and Rafael Gonzalez.
As long as you say nothing now, you'll be safe. Go ahead.
Lisa and Rafael Gonzalez, 98 Youngstown Road. I have a son in kindergarten at Holland Hill and a three-year-old son at the ECC. My son Luca receives occupational and physical therapy at the ECC, among other services. During his transition from the birth-to-three program into the Fairfield Public Schools, our therapists assured us that Luca was in very good hands here in Fairfield. Fairfield's special ed program has an excellent reputation, but I'm sure they are not aware of the conditions Luca will be facing when he transitions to Holland Hill, if our renovations do not go through, or if they are delayed. I am sure they would be shocked to learn that all of the progress our son has made in his development will only be met with less than adequate working condition, sorry, working conditions at Holland Hill. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act ensures that all students will have access to appropriate education. The current conditions of the OTPT room and equipment at Holland Hill will directly impact my son's physical development and his ability to function in our community. Students at Holland Hill are receiving services in the hallway and in a storage closet. It is unacceptable that children like my son, with such varying abilities, disabilities, and developmental needs, are forced to be treated in a hallway or a closet due to lack of space. The floor is not safe for physical activity. The equipment cannot be used appropriately, and the hallway distractions will take away from the precious time our children are allotted with their therapists. Also, I worry about the integrity and privacy of a child's IEP when their services are being conducted in an area that is anything but private. When I look at the conditions my son currently has at the ECC, there is no comparison. It is simply unacceptable for Fairfield to push aside our children with special needs and to say that these working conditions are up to par. They are not. What message are we sending our precious children? Children who are just starting to realize they are a little bit different from their peers when we pull them from their classroom and stick them in a closet. All of the therapists that we have worked with so far have been wonderful. They're highly educated, motivated, caring professionals that come to school every day to help our children, but they are working in unfair conditions, spending valuable time setting up and breaking down equipment and mats for the children they service, taking away from the time that can otherwise be dedicated to students, developing therapy plans, reviewing goals, and reflecting on their practice. Further, the small area currently used for PT and OT is a fire exit posing a safety concern. When it is filled with mats, a swing, and other equipment, how can students and staff exit quickly and safely in an emergency? Finally, I'd like to comment on the 504 versus 462 capacity plan. Choosing the 462 may look good at first glance, but if we cut corners with this project now, I fear that we will be shortchanging our special needs children in the end. Often when space is needed, the first to go are the spaces used by the least number of children. My son is not a number, and his needs cannot be compromised due to a decision to reduce capacity for renovations. The children of Holland Hill need us to be their voice and their advocates, and they deserve better. Sorry, I get emotional when I talk about my son. They deserve better than a hallway and a closet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the applause, but it does cut into the amount of time that we have to hear everybody, so if you would be polite and let people come up without the interim applause, that would be appreciated. Please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Kristen Tharrington, 79 Walbin Court. I am a Riverfield parent, and sitting here tonight, I feel like I'm experiencing a little déjà vu from 2012, 2013, 2014. I'm here in support of the Holland Hill project and making Holland Hill a 504 school. All of the issues that are Holland Hill issues were Riverfield issues, and they all stemmed from capacity issues. They stemmed from infrastructure issues, and I think, I know how long this process takes to move along. When I was looking at my notes, they were from 2012, early 2013, and we already had our ed specs at that point. So I'm asking to move this project forward. It can be done. It can be done right, except for mandated changes that have been approved by the town. Our project is on budget, and if you were there at the beginning of our school year, you would see that the change, we already had a wonderful community, amazing staff, but the change is palpable. There's a different environment. There's a different pride in our school, and I think that Holland Hill and all schools in our district that need these upgrades and need these renovations and capacity increases, I think they all deserve them, and I ask you not to delay.
Thank you. Again, if I could ask, please, please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Emily Lee, 245 Sony Rich Avenue. My husband is Jason Lee. He is a representative of District Eight and a current candidate for BOE, but I'm here as a concerned mother of a fourth-grade student at Holland Hill. My daughter Victoria receives support from the special team at Holland Hill. At age three, she became a bone marrow transplant survivor, but because of the effect of years of chemotherapy, radiation, and numerous dozens of procedures, her physical development was greatly affected, so she needs OT and PT. I appreciate beyond words I can express what the team of paraprofessionals and teachers at Holland Hill do for my daughter, and for us, really. Despite her continuing health challenges, she gets stronger every day. She's tough as nails. However, what disappoints me is the way that the physical therapy and occupational therapy is getting done nowadays. I mean, she did a great job. I should have thanked her. But when I asked her, well, now that you don't have a dedicated room for OT or PT, how do you do your physical therapy? And she says, we use the hallway and/or the stage in the APR. And, you know, I was shocked because, as everybody has stated, we are in a society, also adults, are so concerned about our privacy, and yet we're not showing any concerns about the privacy of these kids. Then I said, okay, so you're running up and down the hallways for your PT. What are you doing for your OT? Because that requires five motor skills, so they have to sit down and ride. Do you do that in the hallway? She said, no, Mommy, we use the closet. And I was like, is the room that small? She said, no, it's a closet with a table and a chair. And she and her friend, who is in a wheelchair, and the therapist fit in this closet. How big is this closet? What is next, the bathrooms? Oh, we got six new spaces. This is how, is this how the Board of Ed intends to implement all the IEPs and other services for our children with special needs? I hope not. We are coming close to an end of our time at Holland Hill, and I'm sharing this story to advocate for the future families of other families like ours. I hope that other children with special needs have dedicated classrooms and proper equipment. No student at any school in Fairfield anywhere should work under these conditions. I urge the Board of Ed to continue to move forward with the core renovations of Holland Hill and amend the current plan to make Holland Hill a 504 school, and that they do so as quickly as possible so that special needs children and Holland Hill have the, at Holland Hill and other schools, have the privacy, accommodation, and equipment that they serve, and they have the right to. Kids are kids. They all need the tool to success in life, special needs, mainstream, or gifted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If, if I might ask again, anybody else wish to come forward? If no one else, again, you're welcome to come forward at the time. This is under discussion. We have somebody coming forward. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Sarah White. I live at 214 Wilton Road. I have a third grader and a kindergartner at Holland Hill. I want to begin by thanking you for voting Holland Hill as first priority in the waterfall schedule last spring. I appreciate all of you who took time to visit our school and saw the situation firsthand. I'm here tonight to ask you to expedite and expand the scope of the renovations so that our children will have school facilities that they deserve, as outlined by the Board of Education's planning principles. Life at Holland Hill has changed significantly just in the four years my family has had children at the school. A single line for buying lunch in the cafeteria, a library that is often used for testing, and a music class without a dedicated room are just a few of the problems that our children have had to deal with more and more over the last few years. The worsening situation stems from the growing population, which has led to severe overcrowding. Between 2012 and now, the school has gained nearly 50 students. Well-meaning projections were made about enrollment that unfortunately underestimated our current enrollment of over 400 students. I understand the difficulty of making long-term projections, but just look around our neighborhood, and you will see that things are changing in a way that means more children will be attending Holland Hill. With an ever-increasing amount of teardowns and a townhouse complex with 13 multi-room units opening in the spring, it is highly likely that we will outgrow a 462-capacity building in the next few years. I thus urge you to make the informed decision to push Holland Hill ahead as a 504 building. Please begin the process of creating ed specs and forming a building committee as soon as possible so that our children's experiences are on par with students throughout Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have PTA leaders that we wish to recognize, and we have a report from Riverfield, and so, again, you're welcome to come forward, but if there are others who may say, well, I'll speak when the item comes up for discussion because I'm going to be sticking around, but please state your name and address.
My name is Jennifer Delillo. I live at 75 Pemburn Drive. I'm here to speak about the effect, the effect that the space limitations have had on Holland Hill's gifted program. My daughter Grace is a fifth grader at Holland Hill, and the highlight of her past few years at school has been her participation in this program with Mrs. Ferrara. Mrs. Ferrara does a great job of keeping our kids challenged, engaged, as she encourages them to think outside the box, push limits, work collaboratively, and come up with creative solutions to problems. However, due to overcrowding and the resulting space limitations, Mrs. Ferrara has had her own challenges to contend with. For the past two years, the gifted class has been relegated to a corner of the stage in the school's cafeteria, with a solitary easel being her only tool for presenting lessons or displaying work. In addition to sharing space with the orchestra and band, the class has had to contend with students coming in and out of the room, noise from lunch shifts, and other interruptions. This year, gifted no longer has a corner of the stage or even an easel to work with. There's no dedicated teaching space for this program. On a weekly basis, Mrs. Ferrara assumes whatever space is available to her, whether it's a room in the back of the library, part of a classroom, or even the principal's office. It's truly creative problem-solving in action. And while Mrs. Ferrara does a great job of remaining positive and being flexible, I cannot help but think that the overall program is somewhat hampered by these limitations. And unlike some other schools in the district that have a dedicated space for their gifted classes with computers and smart boards available, our students do not have ready access to technology or even a place to display and build upon existing work. How can we ask these students to push limits and expand their creative boundaries and then not give them the tools or resources to do so? I realize how fortunate we are to live in a district where a program like this one is available. However, if we're going to provide a gifted program for exceptional learners, isn't it a shame to not execute it to its fullest potential, or to not offer the same opportunities to every gifted student in the district? So I ask that you expedite and expand the scope of the renovations to make Holland Hill a 504 building so that we have adequate space for all of our programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's not a tag team. Please state your name and address.
Just me. My name is Abby Sandry. I live at 91 Brookmere Drive, and I'm here also to advocate for Holland Hill's renovation project moving forward, being expedited, and being a 504. My two children are both mainstream children, but they have a very strong love of the arts and of reading. My daughter's in the first grade. Her favorite thing in the world to do is to go to the library and to browse through books, and I've been so disappointed this year when she's come home with the same fancy-nancy books. Again and again, I've said, what happened? We had a library on a cart because testing was going on in the library. Can you please bring me to the public library? And this is a child whose reading is just starting to blossom right now. My son is a huge music lover. It's the highlight of his week, his music classes with Mr. Noyes. He was so thrilled to start strings this year. We went, we got him the viola, and then I learned that they are taking their lessons on the stage, and they're separated by 100 children eating lunch by a curtain. I said, does that bother you? And he said, I'm just so excited to play the viola. I think this is how it is at every school. I thought that's how it was at every school, too. When we moved here six years ago, I researched all of the different elementary school districts. Everybody told me, you can't go wrong with an elementary school in Fairfield. They're all excellent. And I agree. I think Holland Hill is an excellent school. Our facilities, our staff is wonderful. Our teachers are wonderful. My jaw dropped when I learned about the facilities at the other elementary schools in Fairfield. I had absolutely no idea how far behind we were, and it is greatly upsetting to hear that you, your school is not equitable with the other schools in the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Carrie Hind, 10 Elderberry Lane. I have two kids at Holland Hill. I have a kindergartner and a third grader, and I think the most important point I can make is that my third grader is in the portable outside. When I first heard that, I got concerned immediately. I think it's a real issue of safety. I don't like it that she's out there. It makes me nervous. I don't like it from a safety perspective. I also don't like it from a day-to-day perspective. I don't think these kids, my daughter just turned eight. She's, you know, they're seven and eight years old, and I don't think they had to go to the bathroom as much as they ever have in their lives, except now that they don't have a bathroom in their classroom or anywhere nearby. So this is a problem, because I've been in the classroom a few times, and every time I'm there, somebody raises their hand to go, and it's a major, like a major intrusion into the instruction. She has to stop. She has to give them a fob to walk across. She has to assign somebody to go with them so that they have a buddy. She has to stop instruction and then watch them cross the breezeway into the main building. Then, once the kids get there, they're in the hallway, unsupervised. Sometimes they sneak into the bathroom, they come back out. And this is the best-case scenario, because it hasn't even rained, and it hasn't snowed, and there's no ice on the ground. And I think of my daughter walking out there in the snow and slipping and falling on ice, and I don't want to worry about that. Secondly, I think that she also unfortunately had a bullying situation last year, and the teachers and the principal were amazing. They took such good care of her. They nipped it in the butt in a second. But she doesn't have a lot of private room for instruction and private room to have those types of conversations. So while she was given all these amazing strategies and skills to work through that type of a problem, she really didn't have any space to do it in. So I think of kids who have, you know, that happens to everybody. Another kid who could have a real, serious issue may not have the space to have a private conversation, and that, I think, is a real, legitimate problem. And I know the library's already been mentioned, but I have definitely gone in to help at the library, and the kids love exploring and moving around the room and finding new topics that interest them and excite them. And now they are given a cart, and it's true, they come in with the same books, and they come back with the same topics. And I've seen little boys get really excited about sharks and animals, and then, you know, they want to start talking about planets, but there's no books about planets on the cart. So I just really urge you to please pass this 504. A 462 is a Band-Aid for us at this stage of the game. We're just growing so fast, so I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm Chait Bala from 316 Andrisi Avenue. My daughter is in second grade. We've been in Fairfield for the last nine years. When we moved here, all our friends said, oh, Fairfield, that's a great school district, and that's what made us. And we were prior, we were pretty privileged about being in Fairfield till my daughter started her kindergarten, and then we visited the school. The teachers are wonderful. The learning environment is great, but when I really compare myself, I came from India, supposed to be a developing country. The facilities I had 30 years back in India is something, still, I couldn't compare Holland Hill with that facility. It's an overpopulous country, so at least the ask from the parents is very minimal, like 462 to 504. I know there's budget issues that you guys have to take care, but I think, we don't want to get into the details. I think all of my fellow parents shared their concerns, but the pride of Fairfield is so... But the pride of Fairfield is schools. So I believe Holland Hill deserves its request, and we earnestly put in front of you a respectful board so that we can get this through the process and get it started quickly. That's one point. The second point I just want to highlight is, we should be more focused on bringing other things into the school rather than talking about the space constraints, because that limits our thinking ability and making our children have a better education and better growth. So I just want to state that and compare my own experience from India and here, and earnestly request your help to approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[639.62][639.62][applause] So that some people who are waiting for their turn on the agenda, how many people want to speak after this person? Again, reminding you that you're welcome to speak during the discussion item. One more? Thank you.
My name is Barbara Robbins, 890 Jennings Road. I have a daughter in kindergarten and in third grade. And I'm here tonight just to speak a little bit about the impact that Music on a Cart has had on Holland Hill. I realize that this is not the first time that a teacher has been issued a cart, but I can speak as a teacher myself that there are some major concerns that I have. One of the hallmarks of Holland Hill, as I'm sure everyone knows, is Mr. Noyes in our music program, and he is a real asset to our school. And it happens to be my daughter's favorite class. And I asked her this year, "How's music?" And she said, "It's different, Mom. Not only is it in different rooms all the time," but her favorite part of her class was the special box of instruments Mr. Noyes would bring with 19 instruments in it. This year, he can't do that anymore. He has to bring a smaller box of nine. And that might not sound like a big deal, but as a teacher, I can tell you that impacts the curriculum. He can't do certain games. Sally goes around the -- I can't remember what it's fully called, but he can't do that any longer. There's no personalization. The kids have to share, the ownership, the choice, it's gone. And I know we can do better. So I'm here tonight, as the other parents have said, to ask that we move our project forward as soon as we can and to revisit it as a 504. Thank you. We can do better.
Thank you very much. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Crystal Moynihan, 415 Zoust. I'm a mom to an eighth grader at Fairfield Woods Middle School and a fourth grader at Holland Hill. Thanks for letting me speak today. My kids love Holland Hill, and I asked my son for three words to describe the school. He said, "Fun, friendly, and squished."[767.62][767.62][laughter] Squish is why we need more space, and this is why we're asking for temporary portables by next year to help and to ask for our renovation to be expedited. Our growth, from what we've seen in the numbers, will put Holland Hill above the 462 capacity after the school is renovated. This is why we're asking for a 504 plan to be amended to 504. Just from a personal perspective, and I don't usually broadcast that my son receives special services, but he does, and he's receiving some of those services in a closet. It's an old supply closet. Some of his services are in the Learning Center, but it's along with three or four other teachers who are also giving services to their students that they're helping at the same time. That's a lot of kids in a dedicated space when your child is trying to get extra help. Every nook and cranny is being utilized at Holland Hill. The stage is being used for workspaces, the Gifted and Talented meets in the principal's Every nook and cranny is being used. I had no idea that the library was on a cart, and I asked my son, "Is this why you always get the same book over and over and over again?" He's like, "Well, I always see it on the cart, so of course, I'm always going to pick it." He loves the library, he loves books. But until this renovation came up, I had no idea. But it's starting to explain a lot of things to me. And the last thing I just want to mention is that, you know, we've had issues with my son eating lunch. And, you know, I've been digging at him. Why is it -- why are you not eating your lunch? And he finally broke down, and he said, "Mom, by the time I get my lunch, I have five minutes to eat it. We only have one line in the cafeteria for all the kids to go through who are getting hot lunch before they can sit down and have lunch and eat. We need more space, and we need it now." So thank you for voting for Holland Hill to be next in line for the renovation. I'm just asking that you amend us to a 504, and you start creating the ed specs and create the building committee now versus later, so that our kids can really get the space they need. Thanks.
Thank you.[926.12][926.12][applause] See, nobody coming forward. We'll move on to the present. We have one more. Okay. Please state your name and address.
Hello, good evening. My name is Odessa Billings, and it's 779 High Street. I just wanted to get my story on record, because we were one of the newest families that moved here. We moved from Texas. So I was given the task of researching and trying to find a town for us to move to, and looking at schools, looking at the area, walkability, so many things I looked at when we considered moving to Fairfield. We found a perfect location. It was a teardown, and we built our home, which we love. The opportunity did come up for us to have my three -- I actually have four kids. One in Ludlow, which we moved from boarding school. One is three years old, who goes to pre-k at Dwight. And my son, William, is in first grade. The opportunity did come up where William can go to Dwight, because my other son is going there. And I had a conversation with my husband and William, and we've developed so many relationships over the past year, just from meeting on the playground, just talking to parents. There's such a sense of community that we decided it's best for my son to stay at Holland Hill. And this past year, I joined the board, and I'm so excited about the opportunities that are ahead. But none of that would be possible without just moving the project along quickly and also amending it to 504. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Fairfield.[1045.16][1045.16][laughter] So we'll move on to the item on our agenda, 5A, recognition of PTA leaders. We started this about three years ago at the initiative of Mrs. Gerber, so I'll turn the microphone over to her.
Okay, I'll be brief. Board of Ed reps are sometimes the last position to be filled on an executive board in a PTA, but they do invaluable work, serving as a conduit between PTAs and the Board of Ed, reporting back and forth. And so we would just like to recognize any and all of you who are here tonight. If you could just come up to the microphone and say your name and the school or organization that you're representing tonight, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for coming to all of our very, very long meetings.
Hi, Tom Kane, representing Stratfield School.
Melanie Fox-Carvallo, Stratfield.
Gina Lu-Jay, Roger Ludlow Middle School.
Bonnie Rotelli, Stratfield and Septa.
Adam King, Riverfield.
Eric Newman, PTA Council.
Monique Sudikoff, North Stratfield and Fairfield Woods Middle School. They got me to double dip.[1145.08][1145.08][laughter]
Kelly McWinnie, North Stratfield and PTA Council.
Jennifer Meehan, Holland Hill.
I can't even believe I'm up here again.
Trudy Durrell, Holland Hill and Fairfield Woods Middle School.
Lisa Broder, Burr and Tomlinson.[1177.83][1177.83][applause]
And apparently, the immediate past chair of the PTAC Council is shy.[1196.33][1196.33][laughter] Mr. Fink has joined us.
[inaudible]
No, but for the year's work, you deserve some recognition.[1207.02][1207.02][laughter] Thank you very much.[1210.02][1210.02][applause] Mr. Quinn, the floor is yours.
I must tell you that this is a taste of deja vu. Exactly what you described at Holland Hill is what we faced at Riverfield. And that's why I volunteered at Riverfield. I have no vested interest in that school. No kids attended there, no kids planned to attend there for my family. When I walked through that school, I was horrified. I was horrified that that was a Fairfield school. Okay? And I got to tell you that all the issues that you've talked about at Holland Hill are the same ones that we hope are directed now in Riverfield. Next to me, I have Charles Warrington, from the owner's rep colleagues, Brian Stone, from the architect, Ken Borison. I don't know if anybody can see that, can you? But let me tell you some of the -- okay, let me have those. Okay, you've got to talk about time. This is our fourth year on this project. By the time we complete it, it'll be four years. The approval of the ed specs was in December 2011. We had a building committee established February 2012. We got our RTX in August of '12, and we had the project approved in June of 2013. We then went on, we found PCBs in the gym, and the EPA told us we had to take the gym down. So we had to revise the project again. And we finally started work on this project in the summer, early start work of 2014. Let me just warn the parents of Holland Hill. Be sure that you don't sacrifice timing for quality in terms of being able to really correct the faults long-term. Because as you stay with this project, you learn to live with it and find out what you really have to do. We currently have the school open. It opened on time. We have two areas left, the gym and what the area we call the BOD, which is the fourth and fifth grade classrooms. And I got to tell you, it's really important that you have the dedication and the honesty and the foresight of a principal that wants to work with the committee. We've been extremely fortunate to have Brenda Anziano as the principal at Riverfield. Our total budget for this project, after the PCBs, is $16,600,000 rounding. Our total building area now is 61,000 square feet, of which $16,000 is new construction. In terms of what we did, in terms of the classrooms, we put in seven new classrooms. We updated 20 classrooms. We put in seven new resource academic support rooms, including OT and PT, which was in the hallway, similar to Holland Hill. And that's ridiculous. We expanded the administration in the nurses' suite, expanded the gym with new platform, and a new kitchen with a walk-in refrigerator and two lines, so the kids have enough time to eat. Do you want to go to the next part? Some of the lessons learned. It takes a lot of third-party entities to get this approved. Fire department, building department. Unfortunately, in today's world, the police department and an awful lot of other people have impact on this, including the federal government and obviously the state. We performed extensive studies in the existing conditions to identify the deficiencies of the building, and still, we're surprised as we opened it up. And we retained -- and I got to tell you what's important. The team that we have on this project is, in my judgment, one of the best I've ever seen. I spent 40 years in private industry as CEO of three different companies, and I would take these people on this team to do any project that I've ever commissioned. They are good, and they deserve to be commended for this project. I'll get to the -- what I'm going to show you next is some of the pictorial of what we have today at Riverfield versus what we had before. Okay, that's our new entrance for Riverfield, new tar parking spaces, and that brick building over there is the new gym. That's our new entrance. It's a significant increase in terms of visibility and security. And we won't go into the security ramifications, okay? But I can tell you that we worked very diligently with the police department in putting together a very secure entrance for our school. Go ahead. This is the entrance in the internal. As you can see, there's a waiting area. People get buzzed in. They're in a waiting area. They're not buzzed into the school directly. They're buzzed into a waiting area. And at that point, then they're asked what they need and their needs are again, and we'll have people meet them and bring them. This is the new administrative suite. And the next slide, Charlie? That was the old administrative suite. As you can see, it was clustered and squishy.[1649.36][1649.36][laughter] Okay. So this is our new, complete administrative suite. So people, if you take a look at that big window, not the one on the right, but the one on the left, the one on the left is a security window that looks into the foyer. So when people come in, we know who they are, how many people are there, okay? And they're talking to us through that window, which is impervious to other projectiles. Okay? This is our old purpose room that was also the cafeteria before we got into it. Okay? That's what it looks like today. Okay? It's -- and we're a 504 school, and you're right. You have to be a 504 school. Okay? And go on. Here's the kitchen before. As you can see, that was also squishy. Okay? Go on. And that's our new kitchen. There's plenty of room. There's two lines, so kids can get served in timely fashion. Go ahead. These are part of our existing classrooms. They were modernized, the millwork was changed. And by the way, we put in AC, air conditioning throughout the whole building. And if you're on this committee, you better do the same thing. Because I got to tell you, when we opened this school, the first day was 90 degrees outside. It wasn't 90 degrees inside. And our kids were able to stay the week and learn, and our teachers could teach, because they didn't have to worry about surviving from the heat. For this district, not to have fully air-conditioned schools is not correct. Go on. By the way, I'm a man of very strong conviction.[1774.91][1774.91][laughter] Not sure if you realize that.[1778.12][1778.12][applause] This is -- Phil, you're not here. They didn't clap for me, Phil. This is our completed, new, remodeled classrooms, actually. These are remodeled. That's the existing corridors before -- That's the existing corridors before we got in there. And that's what they look like today. Okay? A big difference, folks. These are our classroom additions. We did have portables. We had five portables. Unfortunately, we still have two in our service until we finish the POD, in which place we'll get rid of the bloody things. Okay? And this is our new classrooms. And if you see smart boards there, considering this town doesn't like that word, the PTA bought the smart boards. We did not. Okay? New corridors, and this is in the new wing. Okay? And that's our internal courtyard. And not sure what the education department wants to do with it, but it's there if you like it. Okay? This was our north addition. Go on. And the gymnasium and platform before. That's what it looked like. This is the partially redone gymnasium, which will open officially on November 10th, which happens to be when we're celebrating Veterans Day. And since I'm an Army veteran, I will be there, and you're all invited. Right, Brenda? She's not gonna hurt me, is she? Okay. This is what we call the POD. You see that, you know, steel curtain in the middle? Well, that's where you had OT, PT, and kids in the middle of the hallway. And that's not right. And that's just not right. It's not funny, it's not right. They deserve privacy, they deserve to be instructed in a real scholastic setting. Go on. That's preconstruction, some of our classrooms. Go on. Okay? And that's some of the work that we did. Keep going. Okay? And that's the site. You know, after you finish a project, or almost finish the project, you always figure people are gonna complain. I can tell you, I have not heard one complaint from a student, from a child, from a parent. Now neighbors, that's a different situation. Okay? But for the constituents that I have, okay, the teachers and the parents and the kids, they love the school, and so do I. Thank you. Well, gladly take questions. That's why I brought these gentlemen, because they have all the answers. Honest, they weren't clapping for me, Phil.
For the work that you got done, you deserve applause.
Any questions?
So, Mr. Patton, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Did I see your hand up? Mr. Fattabean and Mr. Convetito.
Okay.
So first, Mr. Patton.
First, I'd like to commend you and your team on a phenomenal job well done. I know this was not easy, and these projects never are. And it's the sense of deja vu hearing the comments today earlier where I echo your sentiments. My quick question is on the POD construction, which I guess is for the Christmas break and...
It'll be finished by the end of December.
Is the... I can't remember from the ed specs. I know there was obviously issues with that structure, and they couldn't dismantle it, they had to kind of make use of the existing space, as it were, you know, as is. But it looks like it's almost totally stripped.
Well, that's because one of the things that we found out is that whole area had some real fire hazard in it. And we had to rebuild a lot of the walls and the doors, and it was... It cost me about $200,000.
So that's my first question is, did that affect your budget too much? It sounds like you made it work.
Made it work, but I'll tell you, when they tell you, you know, you don't need that much contingency, they lie. You do. Because once you open up a wall, okay, you don't know what you're gonna find. And the gym is a perfect example. When we opened up the gym, we found PCBs, which weren't obvious to anybody. Okay? One thing I do recommend that you think about as the board here, when you renovate a school, put a budget together to renovate a school, the way it should be. And if you have to, you know, mitigate PCBs and asbestos, that's a separate budget. Don't let it impact the right thing to do for the school.
Again, if I could ask the audience so that we can make progress in our meeting, thank you.
Okay. It wasn't for me. It was him.
I'll commend you on making the numbers work, I guess. So the underlying question, I guess, is, so the actual structure of where the classrooms were previously and how that space is gonna be utilized is still overall the same, but like you said, you've had to rebuild walls and pull out harmful...
It's gonna be the 4th and 5th grade.
So, okay. But they're not changing the structure or the flow of how that space worked?
Same footprint.
The biggest difference is now there's a hard-walled resource room in the center of that wing, as opposed to what was essentially an open space in the middle of the corridor that OT, PT used to be located in.
What will that space be used for?
It's going to be a resource room, as OT, PT now has a dedicated room over by the administrative suite.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
First, I echo Mr. Patton's thanks for all your work and for the commending that you share with your team. And just as an obvious point, but as your building committee winds down and another one is starting up, they'll obviously be looking for... I just toss that out there. I think it'd be very helpful, because you pointed out the danger of rushing into something too much. And I was hoping that on that very first slide that you showed, where you've got the February 2012, a jump to August of 2012, and then the transition of October 2012 to February 2014 for the design of the project, and I was hoping you could share a few more details on exactly why it takes that long, or at least it did in this case.
Well, it did in this case. It was a hard thing to get the design to meet the budget. That's basically the bottom line, is that when you start with a committee, you've got a whole bunch of neophytes, including me. We don't know the state rules, we don't know the local rules, or the federal rules, but we're learning. We learn on the job. And as we go through and look at different design elements, okay, it's important that you have the other, the owner's rep, as well as the construction manager already hired, to do a good job of cost estimating. This group, we didn't have that. So we suffered in terms of timing because of that. And that's one of the key learnings. When you put together your architect, you gotta hire your construction manager and your owner's rep at the same time, so you can all work together as a team.
Okay, so that's... Is that the February to August span?
Yes.
And then what about the October 2012 to February 2014 design of the project?
Go ahead.
And Brian can probably chime in, because I was on board at the time, but from the August 2012, that was basically when they started conceptual design, and all the way through the February 2014, that was completion of the main documents prior to finding the PCBs in the gym. There was a six-month delay once they found the PCBs, working with EPA and deciding what to do. So that was... This project would've been completed back in June of this year had we not have to deal with those at the time. But your typical project of this size is for a design phase, we find anywhere from 12 to 14, 15 months, depending on a number of factors. We go through multiple stages of design. You'll have a schematic design, a design development, and construction documents. And each time we stop, typically we'll do a cost estimate, make sure that the project's tracking against the budget, and you test the documents each time to make sure, are we on budget? And if we're not on budget, what do we do to get us back into budget? There's a plethora of things that come in, they call value engineering. And do you modify ed specs? Do you modify the spaces? But it's a process, and in order to go through it correctly, so that when we go out to bed, and you don't want to go out to bed twice. You want to go out once, be successful, hopefully within budget, and then start the project. So it's a process, and unfortunately, it does take a little bit of time.
Well, we started, so you know, we had five different design concepts. Five. Which means we had to cost them out, we had to look at them in terms of the topography, as well as a lot of other things, whether they meet all the ed specs. But it was a laborious process.
And then, using your last question, using your experience, how would you recommend that, what do you, looking back now, not being the neophyte anymore, what do you wish you had done differently? What could have expedited this more, beyond being, knowing about PCBs to begin with? Beyond that, what else?
It's getting your team together upfront. Okay? It's really important that you get experienced people, okay? The architect, the construction manager, the owner's rep, together, so that you live it together, you look at the designs, and people have different perspectives with a lot of experience. And we could've short-circuited probably six months by having the team together upfront. Okay? Not more than that, though. I don't think it's more than that, because there are too many surprises. Almost every wall we opened had, you know, a different bird fly out.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fattabean.
I just wanted to quickly thank you as well for serving the building committee. I know building committee is often difficult, and I'm sure your tenacity had something to do with you sticking it out to the end in this difficult project.
I'm retiring now, you know that right?
But we're see. But I guess the only question I had was based on the Environmental Protection Agency requirements, and whether or not there's gonna be any other outstanding requirements that need to still be fulfilled after this project is complete and turned over to the board.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Convetito.
Okay, I'm gonna start at the top. Ed specs. What can we as a board do to make ed specs clearer, more fluent, save you time, organize things, so forth?
I'll have to give it some thought. I'm not sure I can answer that, John. I think they were pretty good. A lot of the time, we didn't know what you meant because of the jargon. So it's a learning experience for us. Okay? But I think as we got to work with them, I think they were pretty clear.
Okay. And I'm gonna sort of drill back to Ms. Maxon Cannelly's line of questioning. If we look at December 2011 as a start date, again, the committee didn't get together till February 2012.
Right.
Okay? And we're looking at December of 2015, all right?
It's three years.
Three years. You tell me I can save six months by having an owner's rep, construction manager, and architect onboard at the beginning?
I believe that.
Okay? And I can save another six months if I know what I got for PCBs upfront?
I'm saying to you that it's up to the EPA, because we waited for the EPA for six months.
One of the delays you can face is when you have a certain level of PCBs, it does have to be reviewed by the federal EPA, and that gets it kicked up to the Boston office. And once it's there, it can sit and wait for review for a good amount of time, as, you know, the town has heard on other projects they've done. So that you have less control over, but knowing about it earlier can help a little upfront time.
So my question is, and again, Mr. Quinn, you can direct us to any of the professionals at the table if you want. If we suspect that we're gonna have a PCB problem, and given the age of our existing non-renovated buildings, I suspect we will, is it worth, knowing that we're putting a building committee together, and we have a certain amount of time to remediate it, is it worth going in ahead of time and testing the building?
I would say yes. That may not be shared, by the way, but I'm telling you, my opinion is yes.
And again, understanding that, you know, a building committee is eminent, and this project's gonna get underway in three to six months. So, and again, you guys can chime in there as well. Is it worth knowing that before we go out to architects and everybody else?
About everyone? PCBs?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The more information you have at the start, you know, the better equipped you are as you move forward. On the one hand, a lot of times when you hire the architect, at the same time, the owner might engage an environmental engineer to do testing, or as we did on this project, the environmental engineers became part of the design team, and they worked directly for us. But any information you have in advance will always help you, because it helps people start thinking forward of the work that will have to be done.
All right, I'm good. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to you on the next...
Hey, what?
Any other questions from other board members? Mr. Llewellyn.
Got a couple of questions for you. Thank you very much for your presentation. The building looks fabulous. My kids went through Riverfield, so I know what it used to look like. Was the budget at one point, was there pressure to bring the budget down, and was it initially put on the waterfall at 13-2? Or was it initially put on at the 14-5?
I disregarded whatever was put on that.
There you go.
It wasn't my number.
Okay. I'm trying to take into account your contingency comment, and fully understand...
No, no. Originally, the numbers that they had, they bantered around, or a lot less, but anyone my people came up with.
Okay.
It was not my number.
Okay. And I agree, you know, going and probing upfront to find out what you know is gonna be there is probably better than finding and delaying it. One of the questions I actually have is probably more for Dr. Title. Good. And it's... Save ya. And as I look back at the old MGT report, we are supposed to have, you know, 500 kids in the school, and clearly we're about 100 under that right now. We have five classrooms that are going to be in December empty. What's the plan for the district? And I'm trying to, you know, get a big picture of what you intend to do with that space.
I think that's the subject of the, of another committee, and not the subject of...
If you don't mind, Phil, I'd like to actually ask Dr. Title.
Let me finish. It's not the subject of the Riverfield presentation. And so I would suggest that Dr. Title may want to get that answer to you so that you have it, but I'd like to keep the conversation on the Riverfield project.
Well, as I look at the sheet here... Excuse me. As I look at the sheet here, I see that we've added new classrooms, and we renovated, all which is great. I hear that we're gonna have five empty classrooms, and I think this is actually an appropriate time.
That's not a correct statement. Sorry. We don't have five empty classrooms.
We have how many? I'm sorry.
Okay. What we're doing is we're renovating the POD area, which will have, I believe, four classrooms in it. And of those four classrooms, two of them are already squeezed into the other rooms in the school. Okay? And two are in the trailers.
Okay. But we have 100 empty seats. If we're a 504, and we have 405 kids, 404 kids...
Again, when we discuss the long-range facilities plan, the next time it comes up on the agenda, we can explore that more, but we're talking about the closeout of the Riverfield project. Thank you.
Very good. You can control it. It's a very simple, unless there's something to be hidden, it's a very simple question, but feel free to move on.
On the Riverfield project.
Mr. Chair, can I ask that question?
Any other questions?
May I answer that question, Mr. Chair?
Well, let me first see if there are any other board members that have a question of the Riverfield Building Committee. Any other board members have a question of the Riverfield Building Committee? You want to make a comment, Mr. Convetito?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. And it refers back to the main facilities plan. That work was done by a previous board, and the 504 standard was adopted. The 504 standard was adopted so that we didn't have to deal with ebbs and flows in putting children in closets. And if you look back at history, you will find, okay, that Riverfield School in 2006 had 477 students, 473 in 2007, and so forth. Based on a 504 capacity, that would put that school at around a 90% to a 93% capacity over those years to deal with the ebbs and flows, which was a target of the long-term facilities plan, to make sure a 504 was utilized in a 90% capacity. In addition to that, okay, you still have Osborne Hill directly to the east of it that is over capacity.
And if I can respond, thank you. And I fully understand...
Excuse me. We are not on a discussion of the long-range facilities plan. We're on a discussion of Riverfield.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. I'd like to actually make a comment.
I want to make a comment as well about some of the... If you're permitting comments in rebuttal to someone's other statement, to cut off additional rebuttal, I think is improper. If you open up the door, I disagree with...
This may be a court...
Allowing his...
If you wish to make a comment because you haven't already made a comment, feel free.
My comment is only...
Trying to limit a tit-for-tat conversation at the board table...
I just want to indicate...
On a, on a agenda item that is, on an item that is not on the agenda. Mr. Fattabean.
Mr. Dwyer.
The time of... At the time, the decisions were made to do a 504 school had been involved in some of those decisions. My recollection and understanding of that, it was partially space to account for swing space, 90%... space to account for swing space, 90% of capacity, which was, Mr. Confortito indicated is true, but the primary reason the 504 was selected, to my understanding, was that the studies indicated that was the optimum size for educating an elementary school student population, and providing the curriculum and breadth that one wanted. That was the primary reason, that it was educationally driven, not space-driven, that the 504 size was determined by studies to be the optimum size for an elementary school, to offer the breadth of educational opportunity that the town of Fairfield had wanted. That, in my recollection, was the primary driving force for doing 504. It was somewhat space-related, but that was secondary.
So there's no doubt in my mind that, based on the comments from the Holland Hill parents, that we will be revisiting the long-range facilities plan, and we can have a good debate as to whether to go back to the 504 or not, or whether there are empty seats in some school, but the time to have that debate is when it's next on the agenda, when we discuss the long-range facilities plan, so I wish to move on to the school calendar.
Actually, I'd like to clarify a point I made, though, please. I'd like to clarify a point. I'm not disputing that it was a 504, or should have been a 504. Everything indicated that it should have been. My question's very simple. What's going to happen with the excess space?
And we can answer those questions when we
I'm looking forward to it, Phil, thank you.
Put that back on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the support from the board.
Thank you very much for the work that you did, and I shouldn't say Brenda, Mrs. Anzio. Thank the staff for the patience they had over these last couple of years. Thank you. Approval of, onto item 6A, approval of the 2016-2000 school calendar. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2016-2017 school calendar. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? Do I have a second? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Dr. Tidal, this is the same calendar that was presented at the last meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Do you have anything else that you wish to say?
It follows the calendar we have this year, comports with the regional calendar. I had no suggestions from board members to research it, so I think we should just go ahead and approve it.
Any questions from board members on the calendar? Mr. Patton.
I apologize for my absence last month. I was away on business. In the minutes I read through the chair to Dr. Tidal about that you're on the state commission for unifying the calendars, that?
I was on the regional group.
Okay. And I think there was, there was some, or you made some comments last month about the February vacation, but I wasn't sure how that played out. The minutes weren't super clear on, is the regional calendar commission, I guess, that you were on, are they in favor of a full February vacation? Are they not in favor of it?
No, the regional calendar was a handout, and the regional calendar has a February break, has a two-day break, Friday, February 17th, and Monday, February 20th. That's the regional calendar, and that's the one that we currently have, and that's the one that we can use next year. So, the decision of the regional group was not to put a full February break in as part of the regional calendar.
Thank you for the clarification. Understood.
Now, any other questions from board members? Yes, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And this is a clarification through the chair to Dr. Tidal. When we say regional, just for clarification, what is within the region?
It's the CES region. So there's 18 districts in southwestern Connecticut, southern Fairfield County that are part of it, so if you're in CES, this is your calendar. So that pretty much covers from Stratford all the way down to Greenwich, and then it goes up north a little bit, so it's that region of the state. It's done by Regional Education Service Center. There are six of them in the state.
Anything else? If not, we'll go to the, this is a voting item. Any member of the public that wishes to speak on the 2016-17 calendar, feel free to come forward. I see nobody coming forward, so back to the board for action. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2016-2017 school calendar. All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Well, that's a record.
Yes, for time.
That's true. Well, there's always hope that, I was going to say that one of the points of the regional school calendar was to keep boards from having to argue for three hours about all the variations of it, so in this case, I can testify that it worked. Thank you for that, and the families will appreciate it, because we're getting it out sooner, so people can plan their vacations. I never liked approving it in November, December, because it was problematic, so thank you.
So, item 6B, the update on Holland Hill facility, Dr. Tidal, bring us up to date.
Yeah, I'll give you a few comments on that, and I do appreciate all the parent involvement in this. Met with a group of parents, PTA leadership, some of the staff over there, and we worked through a lot. I want to commend the principal, in particular, working with the staff, because this is good practice, because once you get into a renovation project, squishing is the order of the day. And we look no farther than what happened at Osborne Hill over the last three years, and how fabulous the staff and the community was over there, going through periods of time with no library, with no gym, with a portable gym, and so forth, so the staff has done a great job dealing with, clearly, is a suboptimal situation. I actually agree with a lot of what Mr. Quinn said. I've long been a believer here, and since the six years I've been here, that I was surprised at the state of some of our facilities. And the town has put, really, hundreds of millions of dollars into the facilities over the last 15 years. It's not like the town hasn't invested in it, but I think we did cross the threshold last year with Riverfield and putting the, putting in the air conditioning, so I certainly see that as something we're going to recommend as part of the EdSpecs. And omitting portables is one of our goals of the plan, and clearly, Holland Hill has portables and could probably use some more, so I think the timetable of this actually can go a little bit faster than the Riverfield one, because the Riverfield one was done on a slightly slower timetable, where there was sort of that two-stage approval process by the town. You might remember that the traditional way projects were approved here was that the board would actually ask for seed money. A building committee would then get formed, they'd be given about $250,000 in seed money, and then spend almost a year before the project finally got full approval by the RTM. So on this project, while the building committee was established, it actually took till June of 2013 to get the full project approved by the RTM. Our process that we've used for the last two projects, particularly the one at Ludlow High School and the one at Osborne Hill, were faster, because the full project was approved all at once. Now, the risk on that, of course, is that you don't have the level of detail on the project, and you're more likely to not be able to stay within your budget, so there's a trade-off there, but our goal, and the way it's laid out in the facilities plan that the board approved, is to get this project fully funded by the RTM by June of 2016. So that accelerates your timetable that you passed out for Riverfield ahead. I have to sit down with the first selectman, decide how he wants to play this out, because the formation of a building committee, who is on the building committee, how quickly they move, that is in the hands of the first selectman. We don't make a building committee. And the reason that I think that's important is, number one, that will fast-track the project in terms of moving it all the way through, but secondly, that I think, as I mentioned to the board in an email, and I suggested to the parents at the meeting, that while we don't like portables, and we don't want more of them, it is certainly, in my view, a prudent move to include, as part of the project funding, funding for at least one and probably two portables, temporary classrooms, or rather call them portables, they're really not portable, temporary classrooms at Holland Hill, and to get that as part of the full project, and with enough lead time there, and June would be enough lead time, to be able to then, in fall of 2016, be able to relieve the immediate problem there, and still be able to move forward with the entire project. Portables, or temporary classrooms, per classroom, are in the $100,000-$120,000 range, all in. There's certainly a whole provision of permitting and so forth that we have to go through, but they're fairly expensive, and so it makes sense, and they would be quite possibly reimbursable by the state. And I also happen to think that one will not solve the problem there, so that I would be looking at, and we'd have to do some further research on this, at a minimum, including two temporary classrooms as part of the project. We get it approved in the spring of 16, and then that gives us time to get the portables, the temporary classrooms, on-site for the fall, and that will relieve a lot of the pressure on what you heard tonight, because it isn't, isn't great there, but it's also not uncommon for schools to have this squeezed before a project. So, we do have to sort of muddle through this year. I will say that we're doing everything we can to alleviate the concerns. The principal's done a wonderful job with it. Mr. Cummings is working with the staff and getting whatever we can, but at the same time, we cannot, just in case it's out there, is not feasible to, once the Riverfield project concludes, to simply move the portables from Riverfield over to Holland Hill. They will not make it. We had somebody look at that, Sal and Tom looked into that, and they will fall apart. You're still looking at a $60,000-$70,000 setup fee anyways on that, because you've got to attach them, and you've got to run plumbing and all that stuff, but they'll fall apart. So, those things are going to the dump. We have a ceremonial dumping of the Riverfield portables, so that's just not, not a realistic option for this year. We do include in our security package that we made public last year, that any portables, we are investigating the fencing in of the portables for security purposes at all the schools. That project has gone out to bid, it's now going back out to bid again, so that will be something that will be going on, not just to Holland Hill, but at all the schools that have portables. So, at this stage, we have engaged the fire marshal over there. He is perfectly fine with what we're doing at Holland Hill, so there aren't any fire code issues. So that, that seems to be the, the best course of action that's most prudent. The capacity issue, we will be getting an update on enrollment projections from the consultant that I engaged to look at racial imbalance, but even if that isn't done in time, we certainly could bring forward EdSpecs in the December-January timeframe, if that will help move things forward. There's no reason why we have to wait a whole lot longer than that if we don't want to. At the time the board discusses the EdSpecs, that's when we would identify the capacity, so that would be a time to have that conversation. We also would be looking at more than just the capacity of the school, but other renovations, and I think you, generally, we follow the, what's in the long-range facilities plan, so if you want to get a hint of what the EdSpecs will look like over there, just go to the long-range facilities plan. There's a whole page that Tom put together on what the corrective actions need to happen at that school, and that's likely to be in the, in the plan. So, I have been in touch with the first selectman. He's obviously eager to move this thing along, and so, I think we have a volunteer, Mr. Quinn, I heard, was going to chair the building committee for Holland Hill. Did I hear that correctly?
He's left the building.
He's left the building, so that's your first rule, if you leave the building. So, I think at that point, that's probably, would be a good fast-track there. I know that, you know, the board had, you know, wants to look at some other options, and they can still, you know, do that. I'm sure the town bodies will scrutinize any proposal, but the key deadline is to get something approved no later than June, so we can make it into the state for the priority list for the next year. That enables you to get your reimbursement as rapidly as possible, and allows people to get, get going. There could be a scenario where there's some seed money, followed by a full appropriation, but the seed money would have to be a lot more than $250,000. You'd have to get a lot more people onboard, you'd have to get your team onboard, you'd want to do your environmental testing, you'd maybe even want to do some other work, in which case, if you were able to do all that, you might be able to keep the project on the same path. So, one way or the other, that's the way I'm thinking. I want to try to push this through, and I guess that's my update at the present time, and we are working hard, and the principal can probably answer questions if you have specifics about how the building's being used right now, but certainly, it's not optimal. We also know other schools have gone through this right before renovation. In fact, the squishiness is not bad, as the town bodies seek to look at the need for this. You know, this, this is not just something a board decides. The board, the last thing the board does is EdSpecs. From there on out, it's off to the town. You've got to get approval of all the town bodies for this, and when they tour the school, obviously, the visual's pretty, pretty jarring there, so I think we'll get a lot of support, but we're doing our best with it. I'm confident the staff will, is doing a great job under conditions that are not optimal. So, that, those are my thoughts right now on it, and if there's questions, I'll try to answer them, or the principal, Laura Cortella, is here, and anybody else can help out.
I think Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, and Mrs. Gerber, or we, because I didn't see this way. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, and Mr. Patton, and Mr. Fattabine. So, Mr. Confortito, I think you were up first.
Couple of questions. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go from a baseline assumption that this project's going forward in one way or the other. If you put the two portables out there, will you have enough room? I mean, where would you imagine putting them?
I had Sal actually looked at the site there, and there's several options back there. I mean, we, you know, before you can put portables anywhere, you have to go through approvals by the town.
Okay.
But it looks like, out on the blacktop in the back, there appears to be room. I can't be a little more specific. Do you remember, I don't know if you even saw the, some options that there are, there is space to do it back there, and it, it looks like we can do it on blacktop. We might lose a little blacktop back there. We really get in trouble with portables is when you put them on non-blacktop spaces.
Right.
That worked out well at Osborne Hill. That's why we were able to get the gym where we got it, because it was on blacktop. If you're going to put it on soft ground, or you end up in the back where it slopes, that's where you really get, it gets expensive. So, we think we can get two back there without a problem.
All right. And again, as much as I won't be here when that comes to fruition, my concern is that if you ask for the two portables prior to a building committee being requested and EdSpecs being done, my fear is that there will be apprehension to moving it forward. So, my, and again, for whatever it's worth, I won't be here, would be not to ask for the two portables until such time as a building committee has been convened.
Yeah, and my idea on this was, and you're not just disappearing off the face of the earth, right? In fact, I think there's, there's a building, there's a building committee that needs a member.
[laughter]
Now that, now that I think of it, I think we have the vice chair. That was part of my thinking on doing it as a package. In other words, it's not uncommon in projects, and the state's pretty good about this in terms of reimbursement, to say, we need swing space during construction, and therefore, we need X number of dollars for temporary space, because these are going to be truly temporary. These will be something we would want to lease, not purchase, because we want them to evaporate into thin air when we're done. But I would, I would envision that we would put, the funding package would include the funding for the temporary classrooms, the setup, the permitting, the architectural work that would have to happen, not that it would go as a separate request. That was my thinking, is I do worry that if somehow we were able to, poof, have two portables appear back there, then all of a sudden, people say, well, that's solved. Let's move on to the next one, and it doesn't solve the problem.
Is that it, Mr. Confortito? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I guess one question I had is, I know back in other building projects, there was that initial letter that had to come from the board chair to the first selectman asking to form a building committee, but now with the new way that we've done it, that that step is no longer necessary.
We don't need to do that anymore, correct?
Okay.
Right. It's less formal. That used to be a big holdup.
Yeah, no, I know. That's why, just with the timeliness of it.
Because, and Tom's got timelines on this, that was a mechanism sometimes to delay things. So the old process was, the board would vote to ask the So the old process was the board would vote to ask the first selectman for a building committee and sort of nothing happened while that was going on.
Right.
Six months would go by, where's the building committee? Ah, we haven't gotten around to it. So the new schedule doesn't require that step.
Okay.
Once the board passes the ed specs, then we, you know, we've moved into a process, again, we have to see whether the same process would hold because it hasn't been perfect either, okay?
Agreed.
Right? So the process that we've used, it worked really well at Osborne, I'll have to say. I mean, we had PCB, extra PCBs there, but in terms of the, go in with a number and give that to the building committee, that's worked out well at Osborne. We hire an architect to do conceptual design, which gets you to a certain level of a budget and that's the budget the RTM would approve. But you always run into the case, as in Riverfield, where you can have a great budget number and then you discover something. And then, you know, the building committee then goes back to the RTM and says, "Look, we found this unforeseen circumstance. We can't, we don't have enough contingency to handle it." So sometimes you have to go back for more and I think everybody understands that that can, that can happen. So the step you're talking about is no longer part of the process. We can, we can move it along right from ed specs.
And then I guess another question, because it did come up in the conversation with Mr. Quinn and the Riverfield Building Committee, is the whole PCB issue, which obviously I'm particularly sensitive to after having been with two building committees that dealt with it.
Me too.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, just in terms of trying to do any advanced work, like I know Woodard and Curran has the whole district report and I don't remember there being any tremendous red flags with Holland Hill, but I mean, I don't believe there were any with Riverfield either until they opened the gym up. So I guess the question is, would it make any sense to have Woodard and Curran or someone else? And I'm drawing a blank on the one who does the stuff, Jason Pringle, the one.
Yeah, there's different firms that do the work. I mean, it has to get bid.
Right, I just didn't know if that was something that would make sense, just in terms of, again, the whole idea of the expediency of it.
Yeah, I think we, I think there's some logic there to trying to do some early environmental work. That used to be part of that seed money that was given out. So I think that there's a couple of different ways this can play out, right? It all depends on how comfortable the town wants to be with the estimate that goes forward. The longer you wait, the farther you get into the design work, the more comfortable you're going to be.
Right.
So I think that's worthy of a discussion with the town and the town bodies and how they want to proceed with this. There's advantages and disadvantages both ways, but I think it's worth having the environmental work done as early as possible so any known hazards can be budgeted for. Now, some PCB hazardous material is already built into our initial estimate.
Right.
But even if you do all that, you're going to get surprises. I mean, the gym at Riverfield was never going to be touched. The PCBs got hit because a wall that was near it turned up to have them. We weren't going to do anything in the gym. So I think it's probably better to do early environmental work over there rather than later, but we also don't want to hold up and miss a June 30th deadline on it.
No, and I guess one more timeline question and I'm done. Just in terms of, so in terms of getting the architect to do the conceptual design like they had for Osborne Hill and Ludlow.
Yep.
That requires the ed specs being approved.
Yeah, we need to get those. We can give the architect what's in the long-range facilities plan and they can get going. I mean, because that's.
You could do that at any time.
Yes, we could do that at any time.
So it's not contingent upon the board of ed approving the ed specs?
No, and that's something we would pay out of the operating budget, what we've done previously. And then they can start to work on it and then when the board finalizes the ed specs, they can just review any changes that were, that were made. But, you know, what Tom has done in that, in the long-range facilities plan is sufficient to hand to an architect to say, you know, start, you know, we want to engage you to do a conceptual design on this, you know, come meet with the principal, meet with some staff, hear what the concerns are, do some early cost estimates. That process could start really at any time.
Great, thanks.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Gerber actually asked all of my questions except just one for that last point that you mentioned through the chair to Dr. Title regarding the architect. In terms of arranging for who that would be, what's even the timeline of that?
Well, we work, you know, we work with the town on contracting for professional services. Sometimes that has to be bid, sometimes not. You know, we have to follow the town's purchasing procedures. Depending on how much work it is, the purchasing department has allowed us to do, somebody that we've had experience with that's done a good job for us before, knowing that they don't have a lock on the full project. In other words, there's no guarantee, just because you get this phase of it, that you get the rest of it. Now, sometimes it's happened where that person has gotten the full project because the building committee's hired them. That's what happened at Osborne. Sometimes it doesn't. That's what happened at Ludlow. Now, those projects turned out differently and maybe there's a tale there, but nonetheless, we would, we would work with the town purchasing department to identify qualified architect to do the conceptual design. As really what you need is somebody to give you a conceptual design that's a good cost estimate and I will say that those estimates have been pretty good. So that does, that's not something that requires a major, you know, doesn't need a building committee, let's put it that way. We can do that internally, working with the purchasing department. The purchasing department is Twig Holland and Mike Tetro, so they know what the rules are. Board of Finances gives us purchasing guidelines. We follow those for professional services.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Patton?
Like Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, most of my questions have been answered, especially the sensitive PCB issue. Thank you, Mrs. Gerber, for properly vetting that. Two things, along the same timeline that you're just talking about through the chair to Dr. Title. If we did have an ed spec, you know, let's say by January to be approved by February, would we have to do this temporary architect?
You'd still want to do that, yes.
You still would.
Yes, yes, because the architect's going to work their estimates off the scope of the work. Now, we've got a pretty good document to hand them for scope of the work, but obviously the ed specs could alter that. So they're ultimately going to want to work off of ed specs to come up with a firm figure that we can present to the town bodies, but they don't need it to get started.
Okay, understood. All right, so it sounds like that's, that's a good case or hopeful case scenario, is that, that January, you know, winter timeline?
Yeah, I think usually, you know, the boards, unless it's a, you know, mission critical kind of immediate thing or, you know, usually it's two meetings, but so I don't see why we couldn't have ed specs developed for the December meeting for approval in the January meeting and that would be plenty of time to keep the thing moving.
Okay, sounds great. To the tune of the, what did you call them, the extra classroom, shall we say, you mentioned a $120,000 figure. Is that to purchase each one?
No.
What, yeah, what was that?
A lot of that is the setup.
That's just the leasing.
That's the setup plus the cost of the lease.
Plus the cost of the lease, okay.
Right. Lease is about $2,000 a month. So your real, your real expense is the whole, the whole setup, delivery, architect's fees, connecting, all kinds of things to it. I mean, this is really beyond my area of expertise, but if I looked at some notes, architect, surveyor, lawyer for TPZ, attaching an intercom to it, attaching our card, our card access swipe system out to it, all of those things are extra. So we did contact the company that did the temporary gym at Osborne and that's where these figures came from. So we know they've had recent experience putting up temporary classrooms for us. And again, these things can go higher depending on what features you put in them.
Is, is there a maximum or a minimum term for leasing a portable like that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Obviously, we're going to be leasing, you know, if we put these, no matter when we put them in, we're going to want them for the duration of the construction. So I don't think we'd have any trouble meeting any minimum, even if there were, you know, we would, we would be able to commit to multiple years for somebody, so.
It was more the other end of, you know, if it was a three or four-year minimum and we only needed it for three years.
No, 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 no. So there's sort of this, you know, upfront fee to set it up. There's also a fee on the back end to take it away, which you have to include as well, as we found out from Osborne. And again, that, those were paid out of the project, so that worked. The other thing you should know about portables is we also have to pay additional electricity costs for them. So that's all part of it.
There's no solar roof portables?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Patton?
That is it.
Mr. Fattabene, I think Mrs. Gerber and perhaps Mrs. Loom, this side of the table wants to follow up on that line of questioning. Do you mind if they do?
Okay.
Okay. So Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell.
Yeah, well, I guess through the chair to Dr. Title, one question that I had meant to ask that I forgot and then when you mentioned it, TPZ, what's the timeline with having to get TPZ approval in terms of just, you know, with the timing of everything, just with the approval from the other town bodies with the project, with being able to have the time to install it? Just how, how does that, how does getting TPZ approval work? I can't remember how it worked with Osborne Hill.
Yeah, I don't know all the details of that, but we would have to start some of this in advance of all of this so that essentially, the day after the RTM approves the money, we can get the thing ordered. And if we do that, then we're good to go in terms of getting it up for September 1st.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So on the portables, I just want to maybe clarify and understand how the process would work. So you had mentioned that to lease it would be about $2,000 a month per portable? Is that right?
Right, once it's installed.
And you said there's an upfront installation in all likelihood and that is approximately how much?
Anywhere from $80,000 to $90,000.
Okay.
Per portable.
And the same thing occurs at the end?
No, it doesn't cost as much to take them down.
Okay.
Can't remember what the cost was to take them away at Osborne, do you know? I don't remember. Building committee paid it, so we were, we were so happy to get rid of them. I don't remember, there's not a huge cost to take them down.
It's not a huge, okay.
Yeah.
And then how long does it take to actually put them up?
It would take probably two months.
Two months. And so what's the fastest we could do it? Like, do we need to, could we not just start contracting and start putting them up so that we can relieve the situation more immediately?
There's no source of funding for it right now other than our operating budget. And again, my fear is that if we were even able to do that, you'd be talking about $200 to $250,000 to really relieve the problem to put two back there. Again, that's two months from the time you order them to the time they show up. We've got to get through all these other approvals, design and so forth first. So really, by the time you did that, you know, this year's going to be fairly well finished and then you run into the problem of, okay, it's got portables, problem solved. I worry about that, as Mr. Confortito said, so.
Well, the one thing I'm concerned about is that if they have this issue, which seems like it's serious, I mean, I did take a look and it, just from my perspective, it looked like there is quite a squish issue. You know, you'd hate to have a full year of them not being able to receive their full music curriculum if we could in fact facilitate it this year. So that's just something to think about, I think, for us, if there's a way that we can possibly accelerate so that the kids can actually benefit for, you know, from a more full delivery of the curriculum earlier, isn't that, isn't that a better thing for the kids? Even though I understand that you're trying to wrap it with the construction, but if the construction's going to happen anyways at its own speed, why not, why not have a half a year? A half a year is a half a year. It's a lot of time.
The only source of funding we have for that is the operating budget. I just don't see that being available at this time. I think that we are, you know, doing our best with the current situation. Principal can, you know, speak to that. It's not optimal, but I think it's probably more prudent from the short term and long term to do our best, as the staff is doing, to make do. It's not optimal, but that it could be quite a while before they showed up and then it's in the board's operating budget for the year. And I just don't think I can commit that kind of money to it at this point in the year. That's my opinion, but obviously, the board wants to tell me to spend $250,000 to put two portables up, we'd get on it.
This is just my, my perspective, but to me, like, what happens in the classroom to me, you know, that is, I would think, a priority. So I'm concerned that, you know, I know we have a lot of things in our operating budget. There's a lot of things to cover to run a district, but when the kids are actually being affected, their actual learning is being affected, you know, I just, I would like us to reconsider and fully vet that, you know. I might even suggest that, you know, maybe we put it on the agenda for full discussion if there is a way that we can prudently accelerate the delivery of the portables in the meantime because, like I said, six months is a long time. Some kids can cover a full year of learning in six months, so, and some kids will graduate and they'll never be able to receive the full benefit of Mr. Noise's 19 instruments. You know, they miss three months, but if they can get five months. So anyways, I put that out there, if the chair and Dr. Title, if you consider wanting to put it on the agenda, I think we would welcome that because I think that this issue does concern and impact students' learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabene, there's ongoing conversation. I think Mrs. Gerber wants to pitch in as well. Continue forbearance? Fair enough. Ms. Carnell?
Thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Title, in terms of not finding the money in the operating budget, can we go to the state and get any funding from the state?
No.
Why?
They have a cycle of funding. Their cycle of funding is June 30th. So if you don't get it in by June 30th, then you wait till the following June 30th. You know, they don't have a provision for that. I should also point out that, well, this is the most significant case of what's going on. We have teachers sharing space, teachers being squeezed in many places in this district. So I don't know what door you'll open up if you go there right now, but there are numbers of places where people are being inconvenienced, are teaching in less than perfect conditions and, you know, I trust the staff and the principal to really do their best to ensure that the impact on kids is minimized and I would like the principal to have an opportunity to discuss the current situation and the way kids are being impacted at some point here when she gets a chance. But there's no state money for it, not till you put it in as part of a project.
Okay. And then just a second question. I know that, I think a few parents made reference to the safety of the students going out to use the bathrooms, rain or snow. I know I had both my kids in portables and that was a concern of mine. Do they have portables with facilities?
They do, they're more expensive.
Well, I knew that.
Yes, they do, actually. I put them in in a previous district, so that's something that if we wanted to put that into the project, that you could build or you could rent, lease, portables that, say you had two portables side by side and in between them, you know, it's possible to have lab facilities there. That probably costs you more to set it up, we'd have to price that out, but they do sell them with facilities in them.
Because I, I think you mentioned that as a security, thinking about putting gates around. So would it be a wash to avoid the gates and?
Well, you're still going to have kids going back and forth for various reasons. So I think it's been a commitment, because remember, across the district, you've got other portables out there that need to have the fencing and so we're, you know, we're working on that. It's pretty complicated because you need to be able to get emergency vehicles around, you've got to be able to get snow plows in and we've got a good design for that everywhere. It's just taking longer than expected because the bids came in very, very high. We're trying to get that number down to a more manageable number. But right now, you know, the staff are taking every precaution they can, but we're aware that that's one of the downfalls of portables, is there's a security risk there that's not the case in other places, which is why we put the fencing into the year one of the security project so we could get that done as quickly as possible, but it's just, it's complicated.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, well, I guess one thing, just in regards to having additional portable or temporary classrooms put in this year, I don't think anyone at this, at this table is happy about the fact that the Holland Hill community is dealing with the deficiencies that they're dealing with. However, I think it's important just to remember that we've been discussing the facilities plan since February. plan since February of 2015, and many people at this table have explicitly stated that they want to examine redistricting, that they want to cut back the Holland Hill project. So, I just want to put it out there that I think what would be very helpful and very important would be for this board to unite as soon as possible, and recommend that this project move forward as a 504 school. That, to me, in the long term, is much more significant.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabean, I think we are now at you.
Well, thank you for that introduction. This certainly is not the first time that this district has renovated an elementary school.
Right.
We have done it numerous times. We have done a good job at it, I believe, and I believe we can continue doing a good job at it. So, there are a lot of issues and factors to be decided in renovating, renovating an elementary school, only one of which is accommodating the students that exist at elementary school during the renovation. But getting back to my original inquiry, is it not the building committee that hires the architect?
That's the current process, yes.
Well, that's the process.
Yeah, the, what I'll call the permanent architect, as opposed to the temporary architect. If you're talking about the architect that does the initial conceptual design that we bring forward to the RTM and the other town bodies for approval, that's pre-building committee.
I understand that, that's our, we do that.
We do that.
We can do that if we choose.
Correct. And so, the idea there was that that would scale back the amount of effort needed by the building committee, because getting people to serve on building committees is pretty difficult. And we say it's going to be five years, they really get scared off, so we cut a lot of that out. But the building committee, under the current structure, hires the architect, hires the owner's rep, hires all of the design professionals. It doesn't have to be that way. That's just the current way that we, that we do it in town. It could be done differently.
But it's not right now. Right now, the building committee hires the architects.
The building committee hires the architect, they hire the owner's rep, they hire the construction manager.
Right.
Right, correct. Building committee hires them.
Well, the board can expend monies to hire an architect to do preliminary drawings and designs, which we have done in the past, which may be a good thing to do.
Right.
But there is no assurance that those preliminary designs or work are necessarily going to be used by whatever building committee is formed that hires their own architect.
That is...
I just want to raise that as a point.
You are absolutely correct. You are right on.
I think we have a chair, a vice chair, and a member.
Yes. I just, I'm just trying to state the facts as I understand them right now, and the procedure. We have ones clear, and we're going in the same direction, because if you start going in different directions, we're going to delay the project and not proceed in an orderly, forward fashion. Did we also, at one time, do a preliminary study or an environmental study that was probatory, I would say, to potential environmental hazards in most, every school?
We, we did a chlorine scan.
Right.
Right? Which is sort of an early warning sign that gives you some idea what might be there, but it's not definitive.
That's right, it's probatory.
Yes. I guess, I don't know what that word means. Is that a legal word?
Probative.
Probative?
Probative. I guess it may be the, the better...
I think we're probing?
Probing, yes.
Yes, we probe.
Because as I understand it, you don't want to know, you want to probe.
Okay, I guess.
Because if you know...
Can you use it in a sentence? Country of origin.
If you know... We can, we can move past that. If you, if you know there is a problem based on your probing, and it's no longer probing, but definitive, then you open up an obligation to remediate.
That's correct.
And that was one of the reasons I understood it, that we only had a...
Probative. We had Woodrow and Curran.
Right.
Probing, that's why we did probing, as opposed to full-blown testing.
So, we have some understanding or expectation as to what hazards may exist already at Holland Hill.
Yes, and I also should point out, we did more than just probe. That study also identified potential areas where there could be some short-term issues that we could remediate immediately, and we did that. Took a couple budgets to do it, but, but we did that. So, we, we didn't just probe and say, oh, well, there could be an issue here. We probed, and then we took corrective action. The corrective action was from the consultants. Here's what you need to do right now. So, I want to just be clear that it was more than just probing.
Right, we took the prudent course of action based on the report, there's no question about it.
Thank you.
I understand that.
Okay.
My only comment was that we already have some information we can refer to.
Yes.
To have some educated guess, at least, as to what some of the environmental problems might be at Holland Hill, so we can plan already, ahead of time, to know what, what might occur at Holland Hill, and what we might need as far as money to do that. So, there's some information we have that we can already assess.
Yes.
And have some, some way to move things forward based on that current understanding. That's, I'm just trying to...
That's accurate.
Develop the facts. The other question I have is based on what, how far out do our current enrollment projections go?
So, the current ones were, go out at least another eight years, but as part of the work that I've asked the Malone and McBroom consultants to do for racial imbalance, they're going to redo those, so sometime in the reasonably near future, we'll get an update of that.
Right.
And then we'll have 10 years.
So, we're going to have it go out 10 years?
We're going to go out 10 more.
All right, that was my question. Because going out more than 10 years is not really productive, as I understand it.
We're going out 10 years.
Right, going out more than 10 years, there's no real benefit for going out more than 10 years, is there, in your opinion?
Well, the one reason you go out as long as you go is that we have an obligation to submit, I think it's eight-year enrollment projections to the state to qualify for state reimbursement, so you need to go out at least eight. And 10 has been sort of the industry standard, but beyond 10, most people feel like that's guessing.
Right, and that's, that's basically my point. He doesn't, it's not practical or necessarily helpful to go out more than 10 years.
We contracted for 10 years.
Right. So, we're going to have update enrollment projections after the ad hoc committee finishes there?
No, it's going on right now.
Do we know when that is going to be done?
I don't remember what the timeframe on that is, looking at Mike, because...
I believe, I believe we should know around after the first year.
All right, so by January 1.
So, we're going to, by January 1, you're going to have some better information as to what the enrollment projections are for...
All the schools.
All the schools. All right, so then that can give you some better insight and, and possible information to help make a decision on the scope or the educational specifications and what the enrollment number should be.
Anything else, Mr. Fattabean? Mr. Llewellyn? Every once in a while, Dr. Title and I have to kind of look at the agenda and figure out the timing of it for future items on the agenda, that's what we were just talking about.
Right.
I don't want you to think I'm ignoring you. Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. Couple of things. One is, I think that Ms. Lou McCormick makes actually a very good point when it comes to moving this forward. If the town is going to be spending $250,000 now or later, it's the same cost. I also think that if we accelerate the process, we can get the whole budget approved, and it can be wrapped in in the same fiscal year. We, in the last, if we look at Ms. Monsell's schedule from last meeting, we moved millions of dollars around in the budget. We found an extra half a million dollars for legal fees, we found $100,000 that we took out of, you know, other places. It, it's easy to find that money if you so choose. I think that if we want to accelerate it, the, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Bateson, both came out with a very strong statement that they wanted this to be a 504. I think that the Board of Finance, with Mr. Walsh, Mr. Bateson, Mr. Matola, and a few others, came out with a very strong statement that it was their purview, not ours, because they're the ones who are building this. I think we should invite them to the next meeting, we should let them present their analysis of why it should be a 504, and we should move along with this. The reason I was asking about Riverfield before is because we have the 100 empty seats, and that might also present an opportunity for you to analyze in terms of relief space in the short term. If that's ready in January, is it possible to shift classrooms out there? I don't know, it's something to explore. But it sounds like this whole thing should have been addressed sooner, but it's not. To address a comment Ms. Gerber made a moment ago, the analysis of redistricting is more of our fiduciary duty. We need to understand what's going on here, when we have excess capacity in some areas and need in others. It is, no one has ever said that Holland Hill shouldn't happen, or that it should be reduced. We asked what the questions were, but no one has said that we should, we should delay this. If I look back at, at last meeting, you had made a comment that, you know, the funding proposal should be done with this by June 30, so that would also allow us to wrap that into this fiscal year. So...
June 30 is the date to submit to the state for the capital project, and that gets it on the priority list. That's the date. And that will, that frees the money up for reimbursement when the legislature approves. If you miss June 30, you have to wait a whole year for that money to become free. It has nothing to do with our fiscal year. Operating budget is going on this year, whether the town bodies approve it in February or March or April.
Correct.
It still goes into the June 30 hopper, right?
But if you're going to try and capitalize this from a construction perspective, whether it's incurred this year or next year, I don't think should make that big of a difference, because otherwise you won't be able to capitalize your other costs, such as your architectural, your exploratory, your environmental. So, I think it's all one and the same. So, I would agree that we should move forward and see if we can't get this fast-tracked, and ask the folks from the Board of Finance and the RT, I guess it was C, RTM, who were commenting, to come and present their analysis of why we should be with, well, why we should proceed with a 504, and we should take that into consideration moving along.
Mrs. Gerber wishes to make a comment?
Yeah, well, just in terms of the idea of not needing to add space, we have board members who have publicly stated it's in the minutes, not challenging renovations, only additions. Ask for a cost of just renovations.
Asking for a cost is different from saying shouldn't do it, we need an analysis.
Excuse me, Mr. Llewellyn, I believe I have the microphone.
You're right, I apologize, I apologize. Only Mr. Dwyer can interrupt.
Thank you.
No, you do plenty of that yourself, Mr. Llewellyn.
Could I ask the board to come to order? Mrs. Gerber has the floor.
I would say that there have been multiple statements from members of this board specifically stating that you are not sure whether capacity needs to be added. You support renovations, there's no question in that, but there have been statements made at multiple Board of Education meetings stating that additions do not need to be made.
That's fine. May I respond, please?
We do want to get to the public as well. There's three people that wish to respond, since I was looking at Mrs. Gerber. Who is first?
May I respond?
Mr. Llewellyn, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, and Mr. Confortito.
Thank you. Saying not sure is very different from saying not. I said an analysis needs to be done, that's why we talked about redistricting.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
First one question, if we were to find $250,000 in this budget, cutting from someplace else to do this, would that be subject to any reimbursement?
No.
So, that would be fully adopted by the, by the town?
Correct.
By taxpayers, by the Board of Ed budget? We would get nothing back if we found it now?
That's correct.
Secondly, in terms of fiduciary responsibility, I certainly think that's something we have to consider. What's more, let's be very clear, the redistricting committee started because Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mr. Llewellyn specifically raised the questions that they raise here, and they were being, and I, we didn't question that. Many of us finally supported the idea of let's form this committee and let's get these answers. In the meantime, six of the rest of us went to actually go and look at Holland Hill. And in looking at Holland Hill, we knew last year that this 504 was needed. But we listened to your arguments, formed this redistricting committee, so this is quite frankly coming across as blatant pandering, when you suddenly are awakened to the notion... I apologize if that tone or wording is, is rude.
Thank you.
I apologize to the board.
Continue.
But I do think it's suddenly waking up to an issue that six of us knew last year is a very good reminder of why board members need to do their preparation.
Thank you. Mr. Confortito.
Through the chair to Dr. Title. If we go back to the town and ask for an additional appropriation of a quarter million dollars for the addition of two portables, would that be reimbursable through the state?
It would have to go through all of the town bodies as a project? I don't think so. Not, not as a standalone item.
It's not my understanding.
No, not as a standalone item. I think you could only get it as part of a larger project. In other words, we have this construction going on, while we're doing the construction, we need this temporary space, and that's under the, that's, that's where we get our, anywhere between 25 and 28 percent of the cost back by doing it that way.
That's my understanding as well. Second question, or second statement, with all due respect to the leaders of the Republican Town Committee, this board doesn't answer to them. So, if this board is, well, it was mentioned that two members of the Republican, leaders of the Republican Town Committee were willing to support Holland Hill as a 504, and that's all nice and, very nice and tidy, okay? So, if, if the board is willing, and they should come here and justify their statements, they don't have to justify their statements to us, we need to justify our 504 to them. And it seems to me that we've already done that through their statements. So, if this board is willing to take a look at it, I'm more than happy to ask for a motion to add an item to tonight's agenda.
We add items to the agenda in a certain process with the bylaws. We will have redistricting on the agenda for the 20th. We could have an item on the agenda that responded to trying to move Holland Hill ahead as fast as possible. So, let me talk with Dr. Title and see how we might best accomplish that. Other comments that people wish to make, and then can I have this as a last comment, and then I'll go to the public?
Yeah.
And then I'll come back to the board. Mr. Fattabean, okay, so Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mr. Fattabean.
So, I would have to say that the concept of pandering, I'm not sure what we're pandering to exactly, since we're not up for reelection, but other members are. I think, in fact, I've been fairly consistent with my view that schools, both Holland Hill and Mill Hill, require renovations. I've seen it myself, and they both need renovations. The question was, how many classrooms did we need to add or not add? And before we made that decision, I believed it worthwhile to examine the whole redistricting concept, given that we do have available seats across the district. And do we run this place as a district, or do we look at them as specific individual schools? I didn't have the answer to that, but it was something that should be examined as a prudent process. Secondly, after having the summer go by, I guess we had talked about this last year, there are new circumstances that have occurred. We didn't get the outcry from parents last year that we have experienced this year. Well, at least I didn't see it in the same way. The fact that we have music on a cart now, and there's certain other variables that may have been, but it seemed much more, nobody had given us a petition for portables last... Oh, but I'm not done with my comment yet. So, and I can understand that, in fact, you had arrived at that conclusion last year, and you were done on your concept of 504s, and that's fine. I believe that if there is an imminent impact, and that the education is being impacted, then we should address it imminently. You know, if, if the request had been made last year, and it had been demonstrated, possibly the portables could have been in already. But the outcry has occurred now, I think we need to respond to it. Nobody is questioning whether there's a 504 or not. Right now, we're investigating that question. Nobody's questioning whether there should be a renovation or not. I think we're moving forward with renovations. So, we're investigating, and now the question is, when do we need to have the portables? Do we wait? Is it more prudent to wait to put them in? Or is it more prudent to put them in earlier? I guess, on that note, if in fact I was mistaken last year, and I should have known that we needed portables for this fall, then we should have discussed it, and then we missed it. However, now that, I believe that they do need the portables imminently, and it's clearly, it's a convincing argument, and they have a petition of whatever, 400 people saying it, you know, that's a very compelling argument for perhaps we should fast-track, and I don't mind going back and saying that. If I missed it last year, I'm happy to rectify and say, "Then let's do it now. I don't have to wait another year." So there you go.
Mr. Fattabean, and I'll see if somebody else wants to raise their hand, but Mr. Fattabean.
I don't think any board member questioned the need at Holland Hill to be renovated. It's all a question of timing. Every elementary school in the district has a need for renovation, and we have been going through renovating numerous elementary schools. We just finished Riverfield. Riverfield, as the building committee chair said, had similar problems. We're progressing through the process of renovating a large number of schools, and we have renovated a large number of schools. We've built a lot of schools in the recent 10, 15 years. It's not a question of not recognizing the need to renovate schools. The question is the ability and the timing in which that can be done, and what schools would go before other schools, because you can't do all the schools at the same time. So I don't think any member of this board does not recognize the need at Holland Hill. But every member of this board should also recognize the need at Mill Hill, because that is also a school in need of renovations. As to the debate of whether it's a 504 or some other reduced capacity, that's going to have to be a question that I think is going to require a bigger discussion, because the discussion of why the 504 was originally selected was one of educational delivery. And there's no question in mind that if every elementary school, our 11 elementary schools are renovated to a 504 capacity eventually in this town, we may find ourselves with an overcapacity of elementary schools. And the other comment I would make, and ask Dr. Title, whether or not, if you renovate a school or build a school that is beyond, that has a capacity beyond your projections, will you reduce your state reimbursement?
So the state does have a formula, and they will reimburse you for your percentage of reimbursement. Say ours is 28%. It's in that range. If you build what they deem to be beyond the space standards allowance, which is based on the highest enrollment projection of the next eight years, then there's a small adjustment that they make to the reimbursement. They also can make adjustments to reimbursement for other reasons. For example, there are some items that are not reimbursable. But just on the space standards point, you can get dinged for that a little bit, and to be honest with you, almost every project that's done exceeds the space standards allowance that the state recommends, because the state doesn't recommend that as a way that they think that's the right-sized building. They do that as a way to control their costs. So almost every project is going to get some amount of reduction based on the space standards allowance, but it's, it might be a percentage point or two, you know, it might be 23% instead of 25%. It's, if it's the facility we really want, then generally speaking, building committees and towns have understood that. And so for that reason, we don't usually use the full 25% as a reimbursement number. Our waterfall, I think, Tom, we use 20 as the basic, because there's always some things that don't count. So we've sort of built that in. But yeah, there's a small reduction for that.
Then my, I guess the comment I would make, that if a decision's made to build 504 schools, then at some point in time, in the relative near future, you're going to be faced with the problem of having to close another elementary school. And that's going to be a bigger challenge as well.
Won't be my problem.
Well, no, but we as a board, that doesn't mean that we don't take prudent steps today to avoid that problem. It's not your problem.
Right.
It'll be...
I promised I would never entertain redistricting, but you guys wanted to do it.
It won't be my problem either. It won't be my problem either.
I know.
But that doesn't mean it's not a district problem.
No, I understand.
And while I'm on the board, my obligation is to the district and make sure it has, as best as I can, no future problems that I leave it with.
I understand.
Thank you. Okay, we have three more people. Can I take these as the last three comments so that I can get to the public after that? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, Mr. Convetito, and Mr. Patton.
Just a few comments. First, while I direct this comment to the board, it is, of course, obviously directed to the public as well, but just to be clear, the voice of Holland Hill was loud and clear last year, over and over again, through many emails, through many phone calls, through a personal visit to the school and hearing the people there speak. The voice was loud and clear. What I find to be a shame, and I'll say this through the chair to Mrs. Lou McCormick, is I think our music curriculum is vital. It is a rich, rich part of the school. We clearly have a tremendous resource in Mr. Noes. Our curriculum, these children deserve the same access to that curriculum as everybody else in this district does. But that, the mention you make is that moving from 19 to nine instruments is what moves you to look for portables. But the image of gifted and talented in the principal's office, OT and PT in a hallway, OT and PT inside of a closet, a classroom being divided into four, all of this information which we had last year did not move you in that. I think there might be some issues of priorities. I knew very well what we were dealing with last year. Excuse me, Mr. Luellen.
Mr. Luellen, please do not interrupt a member of this board. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, please continue.
And so that 19 to nine instruments is what moves you to make a $250,000 budget adjustment, while I absolutely believe they need those portables, I then go, think immediately, "Well, what about when Mill Hill talks about their," I can't remember which one, if it was the ALL teacher who's currently working in the IT closet to deliver services? Then why aren't we looking at that as well? And I hear Dr. Title's point. There are many staff members who are very creatively dealing with many space challenges, and we address them as quickly as we can. But you hear 19 to nine instruments and a petition of 460, and immediately that gets your attention for a quarter of a million dollars. I think that that makes us look very suspect to other town bodies in terms of our decision-making.
Please try and refrain from directing comments directly to a member, but talk to the issue at hand. Mr. Convetito.
I think I need to address that, though.
Mr. Convetito's next. Mr. Convetito's next.
I find this whole thing extremely disingenuous, okay? For board members to say, "I didn't realize it was coming to critical mass," okay? After everything we've been through in the last year and a half with facilities planning and so forth, it's just a disingenuous statement, okay? This thing has been on the radar, okay, for the four years I've been on this board, okay? And to say that you didn't see it coming, okay, is like standing on a railroad track with your back to the train, okay? So I find this whole thing very disingenuous. The question is, what do we do from here?
Thank you. Mr. Patton, and then Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I'd like through the chair to direct this to the principal of Holland Hill, and who has been waiting very patiently here, and no one has asked you a question. So I'm going to ask the question that everybody, including all the audience, wants to know. Would you give your opinion as to the state of your school in terms of space issues and the things that you've been doing to address them? And then maybe direct those to the comments made to the timeframe we're talking about now, where you might not get portables till the fall.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to start off with, a huge thank you to the Board of Ed members that have toured the building, to the superintendent for his support, the very, very, very flexible staff that we have at Holland Hill, and the support of the parents. This is my fourth year at Holland Hill, and each year, the situation has gotten worse. Last year, I sat in front of you with a map of our building outlining the needs of the building and the space issue that we had last year. Last year, we had 20 homeroom sections. This year, we bumped up to 21 sections, based upon our enrollment in August. Right now, we are using every single space available. We are looking at schedules, so when there's not an art class scheduled in the art room, we're putting in either the gifted class down there, or we are putting in the OT PT into that room, or putting music in there. So anytime there's an empty space, if the gym is opened, if there's not a gym class for the half hour of the gym teacher's planning time, and she's planning in her office, using every single space throughout the day. So it's been a really creative use of space, and I welcome anyone that would like to re-tour the building. You're always welcome. The four years that I've been there, I've always opened the doors for anyone that would like to come toward the building and see the facilities. As far as the instruction that students are getting in the building, I believe in the staff that we have at Holland Hill, and the group of talented educators would be able to deliver the curriculum, deliver the services as recommended through an individualized education plan or an IEP in whatever scenario we were in. I think that's a charge that we have as our profession, that we are always going to deliver the instruction, we're always going to do what's best for kids, and we're going to make the best of whatever situation that we're in, whether it is opening up my office to use as an instructional space, or just finding creative ways to use spaces. We're never going to use that as an excuse not to deliver the curriculum. I think there was one last question that I forgot at the end.
Oh, it was just in relation to, you know, if you had to wait till the fall for two extra classrooms.
So I think my concern is if we put a Band-Aid on the solution now. So I don't want a new Board of Education that doesn't have the background and the history of Holland Hill's needs over the past years to then come into a situation and say, "Okay, well, Holland Hill is okay now. They have two extra spaces. Let's move on to School A or to School B." I would like to be invited back up to the microphone when a new board has taken office, just to make sure that that's not lost in the transition between boards.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So at the end of the day, what moves me is the fact that all these parents have come out, and they have taken the effort to put together a petition to address the issue, and that so many parents have come up concerned about the impact on their kids' learning. Now, if that's not an issue in your mind, where you believe that, in fact, it is livable until next year, then absolutely, if it's, you know, if it's better fiscally for the town and you're indifferent, then I think, at the end of the day, then that's fine. But if we prefer to accelerate it because you do believe that it is impactful, then I would fully support that. I say the decision is really less clearly on the users. If the users feel the need is imminent, then we should do it. And if the users believe that it's more prudent to delay, then we should do that. Because at the end of the day, it's the users who are being impacted. It's not us. So the louder the outcry, clearly, the louder the need. That's generally how it works. And when we were voting on the waterfall for Mill Hill and Holland Hill, and everyone was debating it, what moved me was that all these parents had come out. And that makes a big difference. And when people come up and speak, we do listen, and we take that comment. And if you tell us that there's a need, then I want to be able to respond nimbly. I don't want to have to say, "Well, in a year, two years from now," well, just let's do it. And if you believe that it can be delayed, then we can do that, too. I think there needs to be a certain amount of flexibility that we need to be able to provide in the event.
Mrs. Lou McCormick has the floor for comments.
Right, in the event that flexibility is needed. So I do want to lay that out there, that if you don't believe the flexibility is needed, then we don't have to exercise it. But if we believe that it should be, then it should be discussed further.
So let me have you make a comment, but several, all board members, with the exception of Ms. Carnell, has spoken several times. If for the forbearance of the public that's here, let me go to the, after the principal speaks, let me go to the public, and then we'll come back to the board. Here, the floor is yours.
I do not want any of my, any of my comments to be misconstrued. I'm here advocating for my building as the principal of the school. I do not want anything to get in the way of us continuing forward on a building project. So if putting in portables at this point in time is going to put a Band-Aid on the situation, and then we're going to take Holland Hill off the waterfall and not in favor of that, I do believe going through with the superintendent's plan, with that June 30th plan, putting it as part of a building project makes sense. But as a leader of the building, my job is to make sure curriculum is being taught, to make sure services are being delivered, while supporting teachers in a difficult time.
Okay, so let me go to the public, so if you could step back so people could come forward. Just for the board's information, and perhaps a staff member who's sitting in the audience, it would appear, based on the timeframe, that we may have to move your item onto another meeting, okay?
That was directed at Ann Leffert.
I think she picked up on that. Please state your name and address.
Basically, Sunny Ridge Avenue, RTM member, District 8, and current candidate for BOE, but a Holland Hill father. And I can honestly say that, stop passing the buck. All I heard tonight was, "Oh, we can do this. I haven't heard about this." Open your ears. Open your eyes. Go take a tour of the school. I've come up here numerous times asking everyone to be in the school. Open your ears. If you don't know that parents are upset with the situation in Holland Hill, or know the current situation in Holland Hill, then shame on you. You are representing the entire school board, not personal interest. All I've been hearing so far is passing the buck from RTC members saying they'll do 504. 504 should be on the question. There should be no questioning on another board. Every school should be 504. And you're talking about the future, about, "Oh, possibly closing elementary schools." If that's the same formula you think they're going to close elementary schools, how come that formula wasn't used to realize would be overcrowding in Holland Hill at this time? We're waiting for what? You're asking for a quick fix. You know, and it's an election year, you know putting a Band-Aid on this will push Holland Hill back. There's no question about it. And you can't guarantee me that Holland Hill will be approved right away after that. We know from our experiences at Osborne Hill how long it takes. Stop passing the buck. Come up with a decision. You heard Dr. Title say, "Next September, we'll have a solution and then can move forward." We still haven't got a building committee? Still hasn't really been approved. There hasn't been a budget. Stop passing the buck. Make a decision here, so then the next group of elected officials can push everything through. Because not everyone is up for election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to, anybody else wish to come forward? Who's going to race to the chair first? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Meehan, address 114 Zoest Drive. I wasn't sure if I was going to read this, but I thought it would be a good idea to bring it back to the children. My daughter actually wrote a quick little note for me to bring tonight, so I thought I'd read it. Dear Board of Ed people, the classroom should be bigger because everything is too close together. Also, some classes have a lot of children, so it can be very hot and crowded. It's more comfortable for all of us here if it's spaced out. Sometimes I find it hard to concentrate in the cafeteria during music because it's the room where we eat, so it's hard to think of it to learn music. Please make this better for me and my friends. Sincerely, Cassidy Meehan.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Twain Heron, 53, Forest Avenue. I just wanted to repeat what Mr. Quinn said, is that, at least this is my interpretation, that if we do this, let's do it right. And the fact that this is, we really need this space now, we still need to do the project right. You know that I have been advocating for facilities for years here at the Public Comment. I went through the Sherman renovation, and for those of you who don't know the Sherman renovation, that was done in three phases. And we had, we did Phase 1, and we did Phase 2, and Phase 3 was put off for, I think, 2020 now, or something like that? So to think that the projects can't be bumped because there's more important projects down the line is naive. We need to do this project right. I'm also a power professional at Holland Hill. I know what the facilities are there, but that doesn't negate that we have to do it right. So I would think we would want to bundle it so that we got the reimbursement to put the building committee together. I just would, my fear would be that if we got two portables now, it would not solve OT PT in a closet. It would not solve all the core facility issues. It does give us an additional classroom space, but there's other spaces that are equally deserving of renovation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else wishes to come forward? Whoop, we have another race going on.
We actually have the same name. It's a little bit odd. Kristy Vitale, 49 Longview Avenue. No, so you all know her, right? Yeah, exactly. Same bank, same movies. Yeah. Anyway, okay, so my daughter's a third grader at Holland Hill.
I'm starting now.
And, thank you. My daughter's a third grader at Holland Hill, and I didn't actually prepare anything. So I'm not going to be quite as elegant as some of my peers today, but my daughter receives extensive services at Holland Hill, and she has done so over four years. And she went from having PT and OT in the hallway to having a dedicated, partially dedicated space that was a great improvement, until this year, where she went into a closet. All of that said, the value of doing the right thing, not for my kid, who won't even benefit, but for any other kid who would ever go home and tell their parents, or their grandparents, or their friends, because they don't know the difference, where they had their class was in the closet. The creative steps that this team has taken, and I and I say "team" because all of the teachers, paraprofessionals, everyone at Holland Hill, is amazing and dedicated, and they turn lemons into lemonade all the time. But what these kids are going through is one year right now. I'm sorry. It's true. And I'll take the closet in order to get the right situation in place for all of Fairfield. So, I hope you'll move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vitale Two, please state your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Verna Hill Road. I do not have children at Holland Hill. That did not preclude me from speaking before this board last spring, expressing the need, having visited the school for various extracurricular activities and speaking to other parents, and hearing public comment from other parents. For years, the PTA spoke leadership, for years, speaking for the parents at that school. I understand that a petition is moving, but to say that you have not heard of this problem from parents, well, then you weren't listening, and that is another issue. In terms of the 504 school, you can debate whether or not every school should be a 504. Holland Hill is in the center of town. It borders many other districts. It's in a densely populated area. In terms of home values, families, it's at starter homes, I think that you're safe building that to a 504. I think we're wasting a lot of time. I think you should just put it on the agenda as soon as possible, unite, put it forward, so you can get the EdSpecs together, get a building committee together, and have other town bodies pretty much put their money where their mouth has been for the last couple of weeks. I thank you, and I hope this moves forward for everybody.
Thank you very much. Somebody was coming up right behind you, and you beat them to the desk. Please state your name and address.
Rafael Gonzalez, 98 Youngstown Road. I'd just like to say thank you first to the board. It sounds like there's a lot of concern, and I appreciate the awareness that the board has taken on the issue. I appreciate the staff at Holland Hill for doing what they can with the situation. It sounds like to me that things were very clear before. I'm slightly disappointed that it's taken this long to figure out, so I compel, you know, the board to move quicker. I see that there's been a lot of compelling argument tonight, and it just seems to me that we're being, isn't the job of the board to be more proactive and not reactive today? There are a lot of priorities. You take them one at a time, and it's about priorities. And I hope that you move quickly on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quick, before somebody gets to you first.
There's nobody else named Christine Vitale, so I don't know who would speak. Neil Fink, 78 Crest Terrace. First, I want to recommend that the board not consider any plan that it would involve paying for temporary classrooms or any other type of capital improvements like that out of the operating budget. First, you know, we all know that Band-Aids don't work. It's been tried before in the district, and we know what happens with portables that were meant to be temporary classrooms and have really become permanent fixtures. I mean, I'm not sure how long, it's got to be at least 10 years or more that the portables were at Mill Hill and Riverfield. That, to me, doesn't sound very temporary. Second, you know, you'd have to deal with the reality that if you're going to reopen the operating budget, there's probably many things that you could consider spending $250,000 on that were left out of the budget the last time, you know, whether it's, you know, needs at other schools, or, you know, other gaps or holes in the budget that, you know, where people's priorities weren't met. But mostly, I'm concerned about the Band-Aid and the, and the kind of message that that sends to the other town bodies. I'm responding to points made by one of the board members. I assume that everybody in the board is clear on the process of how, you know, how the building committee and all of this works. But having served on a building committee, I just want to clarify that the decision of what the capacity recommendation of the school will be is strictly within the purview of this body right here to put into the EdSpec. Once a EdSpec is put together and the, you know, a committee is formed, a building committee is formed and given a charge by the selectmen, it's their obligation to come back and deliver a project that meets that EdSpec. It's not up to the RTM to decide. And, you know, frankly, I wasn't even sure I was going to speak tonight until I heard somebody say something about having the support of the RTC. I don't know if that was a Freudian slip or not, but the Republican Town Committee or any other political organization certainly, you know, has no official input into what capacity should be put in the EdSpec. If the community and this board believes that Holland Hill should be a 504 school, then that's what should go into the EdSpec, and that's the plan that should move forward. It seems to me to make a lot of sense. I've spent a lot of time looking at the projections and the numbers. There's nothing to suggest that in the next 10-plus years, that numbers in this district are going to come down to a point where we'd have to consider something like closing an elementary school. You know, we're seeing a slight dip right now, but if you look at the current real estate market and for-sale signs and new construction, it's, it would be disingenuous to say, you know, well, we should, you know, hold back on the capacity stuff because, you know, we're going to, you know, suddenly have all this extra room in our schools. And to that end, you know, and I think it's directly related to this topic, I suggest that it's time that the board comes to the reality that redistricting is not going to be the solution to the capacity problem that we have right now. Let's stop wasting time on this redistricting committee, and, you know, all it's really doing is alarming the community, and it's not addressing the actual problem at hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? Okay. So, I thank you for coming out. I thank you for the emails. I thank you for the petition. It's good that you are advocates, not only for your children, but for your school. So, thank you for coming out. I need a motion to move, to postpone Item 7A to future agenda. I'll say the meeting in November, so that we can make sure that we don't bump Ann again in October if there's a lot of discussion on redistricting. Can I get a motion to move this to the November meeting? Mr. Llewellyn, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, any comment on moving the agenda item 7A to the meeting in November?
How long is this agenda going to take?
It's about a 30-minute presentation plus Q and A.
All right. I have, any, this is an administrative matter, so will, any comment from the board members on this topic of postponing the item?
In terms of moving it to November agenda, how cluttered is the November agenda?
Well, that generally is just the reorganization meeting and a couple of items, so I don't think it's that cluttered generally.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure we weren't going to...
We can get it on there.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of moving Item 7A, postponing Item 7A to the November meeting. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 7B, our budget process is that in October, if board members wish to make comments on what the 2016-17-year budget should look like, that they have personal perspectives on that. This is a time to put those forward. It's not the only time, because you certainly are, can send emails into the superintendent and whatnot. Remind you that in November, the superintendent will present his concepts of the budget drivers from a program perspective. And then in December, we discuss the budget driver related to health and pension. And then, of course, in January, we have our marathon sessions. So, I see Mrs. Maxon Cannelly's hand up. What, what would you like to share?
Just one specific item. I did meet with Mr. Cummings and Mr. Wickman this summer, along with Mrs. Gerber, to talk about math elementary textbooks. You know, that has been, we've been waiting and waiting on that, and as they've waded through what would be, what would be evolving on the textbook, but that is something that, whether myself or anyone, that I would hope to see in this next budget, is a commitment to an elementary school math textbook.
Thank you. Other comments, Mrs. Lou McCormick, followed by Mr. Patton.
I have, I have several. I would agree on the math. That would be good. Secondly, I would like to see if we can't invest heavier in our, in STEAM. So, that's like the STEM with arts associated within the middle school and high school. I think that's really important. I think the development and kind of beefing up of our whole STEAM program within our district would benefit everybody, particularly the skills that kids need coming out of here. Additionally, on that topic, specifically computer programming, I think we have computer science classes, which are, you know, I think some of them actually show kids how to use technology. But it would be wonderful if we could enhance further our ability to actually create the technology. So, programming classes, robotics, that sort of item, which, again, is kind of heavy into the STEAM area, very, very important, clear emphasis, higher-paying jobs coming out when you have mathematics woven in. It's just a reality of what's going on out there. And then, thirdly, we've harped on this for quite a while, but I want to make sure, this is said early, that we have a deliberate effort to restore the funding to world language. I know we restored part of it from what we had cut back in 2011, but I think we restored 100,000 of the 500,000 or something in that, thereabouts. It would be nice to restore the whole amount and see how far back we can pull the introduction of language, to make it kind of deeper, rather than a very peripheral experience, kind of culturally. It would be nice if it was very skill-oriented, because I think world language is a very, very important skill in this day and age, and we'd like that to be introduced as early as possible. So, those three areas, the STEAM, the computer programming, and world language. And I, oh, let me note one more thing also, which I had mentioned earlier, which is the grammar. Grammar introduction and the introduction of roots and suffixes and prefixes to be incorporated within the curriculum. And I know it must be, but to make sure that we maybe spend a little of the focus of the funding, if in fact it requires funding, for us to make sure that it is kind of equally delivered throughout the system, so that we don't find some kids are getting Latin roots and some kids aren't in fifth grade or fourth grade or what have you. It would be nice that if we also made sure on the skills basis, that the grammar and vocabulary is delivered fully within the elementary schools, because I think they'll be better prepared for the middle school, high school experience.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
Just one thing that I've been advocating for, for the last few years in conversations with Ms. Kaita Leonard and Mr. Rafferty and Mr. Cummings, and that's, I guess this would fall under professional development, budgetary concerns, but more of a time constraint issues. So, I don't know how that would be massage to the budget. I'm sorry. And that, that is getting to the point. Transitioning students and teachers getting together between fifth grade, I'm sorry, between end of fifth grade, transitioning into middle school, and having fifth grade teachers and sixth grade teachers, or the leaders on those teams, and the sixth grade deans getting together, maybe at the halfway point or several times during the year to make sure that, educationally, that our elementary school students are prepared for middle school, even better than they are now.
Ms. Carnell?
To, I guess, capitalize on what Mr. Patton said, I think it's also really important that we have the transition from the middle school to the, to the high school. Also, somehow to connect the teachers and principals and all the people involved in the curriculum. I believe that at one point, this was before I was on the board, there was honors English or some sort of English advanced classes in the middle school. Can somebody from the board please correct me, who's been on the board? Anybody awake?
The only person that is that old is Mr. Fatabene, but, but, this is an opportunity...
Oh, there is a question. That's why I'm trying to ask. There was advanced English classes in the middle school, correct, at some point?
Honestly, I don't have specific recollection of that.
Okay. Okay. Well...
I assume there was.
Okay. Well, if there was, I'd like to know if we can bring it back. If there wasn't, I'd like to know a way that we can do it. I think that'll make the transition into high school much easier, because I know that we seem to make a better transition in terms of the math as opposed to the English.
Any other, Mr. Convetito?
I'll just give you one off of my laundry list, because it concerns me going into the future a great deal, and it's been talked about by the public at this, in this room and by this board. With the SATs being the new standard at the juniors and high school, my concern is that we will create a tremendous disparity between the haves and the have-nots for those who can afford an SAT prep class and those who cannot. And I'm concerned, I'm wondering, and the question that Dr. Tyll is, is with the new block schedule, I know that juniors and sophomores and even seniors have free time in their block schedule, what would the funding amount be to bring online a SAT prep class as part of the curriculum?
I think we're taking, I think Dr. Tyll is taking notes, so that he can take these ideas under consideration as we, as he puts the budget together. If, if any of you need that information sooner than the budget process, just talk to Dr. Tyll himself. Mr. Llewellyn?
A couple of things. One is, if we could this season true up kind of the actuals with the budget, because we're getting pretty far out of line, because we're doing our budget versus budget versus actual. So, last year, we had 1,007 variance in salary. We had a 900,000 variance opposite direction in part-time. So, if we can true those up, that'd be great. It makes the numbers a little more realistic. I think if we could also be previewed on anything that may be added or new in terms of either staff or programs, even ahead of the budget season, we can then have a discussion over it, as opposed to seeing things as they're hitting the budget for the first time. I think that'd be really beneficial to kind of moving forward. In addition, if there is any new technology that we're going to need, if that can be detailed out as well. I'd had the PSAT question. I didn't know if that was something that goes into our operating budget. My understanding is the state was paying for that for a bit, but I'm not sure if that flows into next year or just this. And then, I'm concerned about trying to have some, some, some good detail in professional development and getting that kind of flushed out. I know we moved about 17% of that out this year to cover other costs, but I think, you know, supporting the development of the teachers is critical as we transition through some of these new curricula. And then, I guess the other thing is, if you, ahead of budget time, can get us any insight into some of the costs associated with the district improvement plan that you've put forth, that'd be great, because we can kind of move through that ahead of budget season.
Any other members wish to make comments? Let's see. Anybody, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six. Any comments from the two of you? No? My only comment would be, I do believe that this board made a multi-year commitment to building the world language program to K to 12, and so I hope that this board will support that continued effort, or not this board, but the next board, because there will, of course, be a change in, in membership at least two positions. Any other comments? Dr. Tyll?
Right. No, appreciate the input. I do want to point out that you did approve the district improvement plan. There's lots of initiatives in it, to the extent that they are going to, you know, some of what you've mentioned in here, some people have mentioned some things, and they're in the district improvement plan almost, you know, specifically. So, just want to say that, you know, our focus is going to be implementing the district improvement plan and getting the resources necessary to make sure we can do that, because that's something that the board actually unanimously approved. So, that's obviously going to be a priority for us. And so, we'll have to think out loud about, you know, what, how much of that can we bite off for year two. But I think that that's our touchstone. That's what will drive our priorities. And some of you have hit on some of the areas that are actually, you know, in the district improvement plan. We also have a technology plan. Obviously, we need to fund that. And we also have, you know, a multi-year facilities plan, and that has to get, you know, funded as well. So, I just want to say that, you know, because now we have the district improvement plan, I feel like I've got an obligation to make sure that we're making good progress on that, because that did have the unanimous support of the board. And I don't think I can come in with 8%. And I don't think I can come in with 8%, so, to do everything you guys want, but I'll do my best.
Okay. Onto item 7C, approval of Dr. Title's teaching position. Recommended motion that the Board of Education allow Dr. Title to accept a paid teaching position at Sacred Heart University on his own time on Friday nights and Saturdays for the spring 2016 semester. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, or Mrs. Maxon Cannelly? As the board knows, because of the tightness of the wording of Dr. Title's contract, it requires approval, even though it's on his own time, if you will. And so, this is the same approval that we gave for the fall semester. It, it has to come up now because Sacred Heart needs some planning time, so that if he can't do it, they can find a replacement. Any comments from the board on this motion? Mr. Fadabean?
When we first approached this subject matter, it was based on an agenda item that was nondescript, and it was hard to determine what was meant by that agenda item. So, I came to the meeting with no preconceived thoughts on the matter, and at the meeting we had some discussion, and I voted to approve. After that time, I had some concerns, and I'll walk you through my analysis. The superintendent's job is a difficult job. It requires more time than the average employee. It's a contract position. It's not an ordinary employee. In that contract, which was negotiated, there's a term which requires board approval for any employment. The rationale for that is that it is a difficult job, and we don't want the superintendent distracted from, from his initiatives in advancing the district. And I applaud Dr. Title for wanting to do this. If I was in his position, I would probably want to do this. And I have, the difficulty I'm having and the conflict in my own mind is that my duty is to the district, and my duty is what's in the best interest of the district. And I can, because of the time commitment and the continuing time commitment, because it's not just one semester, it's two, and probably next year and the year afterwards, that's a precedent, that there's inherently at some point going to be, and will be, a conflict in Dr. Title's time he commits, make a decision whether he either plans for a lesson, works with another student, and it may conflict with his time he has to choose to commit to the district. And that's my problem. I don't think I can support this in good faith, having the obligation to do what's in the best interest of the district, when I believe it is going to be a problem for the district and not in the district's best interest over the course of time. So, I cannot support this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Confortito?
With all respect to my other board members, I'm happy to support this motion, and I'll tell you why. Because the course is a graduate level course, teaching professionals, okay, at the administrative level in education. One of the reasons Dr. Title was hired here is for his expertise in that, and I commend Sacred Heart for wanting him to share that expertise. The other reason I'll support it is because it also gives this district an advantage over other districts in that they will know Dr. Title when we're out there advertising for a position, and who would want to come here and who would want to work in this district, okay? The fact that he wants to use his time on Saturdays and Friday nights, and I hope you were not sitting up Friday nights thumbing through budgets and everything else for this district, okay? And if you want to give up your family time on your weekends and your Friday nights with your family to pursue this endeavor, more power to you. It only benefits us as a district.
Mr. Llewellyn?
I can support this, and I did support it the first time around because it was a one-off, but as was previously stated, it is setting a precedent to do it, to, to roll it into the next semester, and it is a significant time commitment if done properly. And we also are heading into the budget season where I do have expectations that the work weeks will lengthen, and the amount of work that goes into it. You know, as we ask for information, we're told that, you know, things take a lot of time and, and we need extra help. I also think the precedent is an issue if, you know, where does one draw the line? Is it just teaching, or do we then move on to, well, you know, we can take a consulting gig as long as it's on our weekends and nights? I, I think the contract was written for a reason. The contract has in it that, you know, it can't occur without coming before the board, and I don't think that, that is an abnormal clause, that you have a primary role and, you know, that is, should be the focus of your professional time.
Anybody else? Two people, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, followed by Mr. Patton.
Well, I do hear Mr. Fadabean's and Mr. Llewellyn's point. This is, to me, to a degree, data-driven. Until someone can tell me that any of his work of this fall semester has had a negative impact on his work for the district, I don't see a reason. I think this is a tremendous boon to the district, that we would have this, resource this in to some of the staff at Sacred Heart, to get the best quality administrators that we possibly could, to know exactly what is out there on the front lines in terms of the education. This is changing all the time. I think it's a tremendous asset, and more to the point, this is a, one Friday afternoon, two Saturdays in a month, this isn't even weekly. And, once again, for Dr. Title to choose how to spend his free time, I don't think he was spending, I could be wrong, I do not believe he was spending his Friday nights or his every other Saturday addressing our budget issue questions or those of the other town bodies. And I believe this is going, I agree, this was put into the contract for a reason. He has fulfilled that reason by bringing it before us. I think this is a huge plus for the district.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
I'll echo Ms. Maxon Cannelly and Mr. Confortito. Basically read my mind when this whole thing came up and I learned about, you know, what the position would entail, teaching, that, wait, we get an, kind of an inside look at potential candidates, kind of, you know, ahead of the curve. For those of you who've been, you know, living in this town for a while or have, have kids in the school systems, we have a lot of teachers and administrators who, who came from this area, whether it's a school or grew up here. And, you know, it's nice to know that, that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to, to kind of vet them, you know, ahead of the curve. Whether Dr. Title's thinking that or not, you know, that's, that would be his prerogative, but I have no problem with him taking his free time, as long as every other Saturday he still can, you know, continues in the spring to root for the Boston Red Sox, I'm good.
We need to change seats. You wish to make a comment? Ms. Carnell, and not about the Red Sox, right?
Through the chair to Dr. Title. Dr. Title, do you think in any way this has, has impacted your time in regards to your day job?
No. It's a graduate class in data analysis and school improvement, and, principals are...
We've got some projects.
We had some projects. And so, actually, in many ways, what it's asked me, forced me to do is to read through some of the more recent literature about that very topic, and I've actually brought that to our group, much to their chagrin. Their school improvement plans will be better for it. No, it hasn't. I still have every, I still have most Friday nights and every other Saturday and all day Sunday to work at this job that I probably work at 80 hours a week to begin with, so this is really coming out of discretionary time, and it has not impacted my ability. In fact, I think it's actually enhanced my ability, and I do agree with the fact that I'm scouting potential administrators when I'm, when I'm there. It just comes with the territory.
And the most important, does it impact your time to watch the Yankee game?
This board meeting has impacted the Yankee game. I'd love to get some Tuesday nighttime back.
So, I won't belabor the point. I don't think there's anybody in this community that questions whether Dr. Title has committed 150% to this district, would, no matter what he's faced with, he has found a way to accomplish the goals that have been set out for him. So, I'll be supporting this. If there are no other comments, it's a voting item. Any member of the public wish to comment on this motion before we take action? Please state your name and address.
My name's Adam King. I live at 1084 Uncle Road. I'm an educator. I have an administrative degree. I went to Fordham University. Most of my professors were superintendents and principals, and I commend you for wanting to do that, Dr. Title. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else wish to come forward? Back to the board, are we ready to take action? Okay. The motion in front of us is that the Board of Education allow Dr. Title to accept a paid teaching position at Sacred Heart University on his own time on Friday nights, Friday nights and Saturdays for the spring 2016 semester. All in favor, please? Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed. Mrs. Lumecormick, Mr. Fadabean, Mr. Llewellyn, the motion passes 6 to 3. In order to allow for the superintendent's report and the update on the advisory committee, can I have a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mrs. Carnell? Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion? It's unanimous? You raised your hand, right? It's unanimous. So, superintendent's report, what would you like to bring us up to date on?
You skipped an item.
Oh, the minutes, sorry.
Come on, it's always an interesting item. I know it's perfunctory in most places, but not here.
Thank you for picking that up. Recommended motion for the September 24th minutes, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2015 regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any conversation among the board on the minutes? Yeah, please do.
I just wanted to remind everyone that you did have at your table a draft, it says draft two in parentheses, the original set of minutes had left off Mrs. Lumecormick's name, and, just at, at the very beginning, and then she was mentioned throughout the rest of the minutes, so we just made that change today, and thank you to Mr. Patton for pointing that out.
Any other questions on the minutes? Seeing none? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2015 regular meeting, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mr. Fadabean, Mrs. Lum... Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? Are you in favor? Okay. Mrs. Lumec... It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Now, onto the superintendent's report.
All right. Going to the...
Wait a minute, we ought to take just a moment perhaps for Mrs. Gerber. No, please, onto the superintendent's report.
I thought you were going to cry. I'm going to cry.
Oh. The calendar and two minutes and the minutes? It's a new day.
The superintendent's report.
Sorry. I, I, I've been digging around, and I know some parents got letters about their kids being AP scholars, and we hadn't reported on that, and I thought it would be a good idea just to share that with everybody. We still haven't heard yet, they haven't done the AP honor roll. I think we're going to qualify for that again this year, because we had such an increase in the number of kids that took and got three or higher, but I thought this is a pretty good snapshot. It's broken down by school, and the, the AP, Advanced Placement College Board breaks it down by AP scholars, which is three or higher on three or more exams, AP scholars with honor, 3.25, AP scholar with distinction, national AP scholar, and AP international diploma. So, I'm very proud of all the students from both high schools. We continue to have more kids taking more AP classes and doing well on it, so I just wanted to point that out. One of the students talked about how the attendance wasn't great at one of the soccer games. I should point out that last Friday night, as I try to go to every Ward Ludlow sporting event, this really tested my, my metal, and this was a Friday night where I was not teaching. So, what do I do on Friday nights when I'm not teaching? I'm going to sporting events. So, in the pouring rain, it was the Ward Ludlow field hockey game, and what I have to say is, I was amazed at the number of students and parents that were there. It was phenomenal. That was the worst night of the whole weekend. Not only was it pouring rain, but it was windy, most of the umbrellas were blowing inside out, and those kids are out there on our new turf field, which drains beautifully. It was a work of art. I loved seeing the turf field. There's something about having to go through 12 votes to get something done to see it actually happen, but the turf field was a thing of beauty. But the students were there, maybe not the same numbers they would have been. The parents are there, and I made it for a half, and I was waterlogged, so I just want to say that was great. I was rooting for a tie. If you ever want to see school spirit, there's a whole series of Ward Ludlow games coming up, a couple soccer games, volleyball, it's all coming up in the next week, so it's really cool. And lastly, word that one of our coaches, who's also one of our teachers, John Reisert from Ludlow, has been chosen by Connecticut as their nominee for National Coach of the Year in Tennis. I remember last spring, Ludlow, he, he won Connecticut Coach of the Year, so they're going to nominate him for National Coach of the Year. He has to compete in the regionals, it's like Miss America. If he wins the region, then he's one of the eight national finalists and could be, could be National Coach of the Year, and he certainly is very, very deserving, a very fine teacher and a very fine coach. So, I just wanted to point out that piece of good news. So, I think I'll stop there, given to the lateness of the hour.
Any questions on the topics Dr. Title raised? Seeing none? Committee liaison reports, we'll start with redistricting. Anybody else other than redistricting has a report that they need to give? Nope, floor is yours. Then, after the, Mr. Confortito speaks, I'll go to our expert transportation guru. Mr. Confortito?
I'm almost leery to even bring the subject up at this point. We had a redistricting meeting last Thursday, Tuesday evening?
Tuesday.
Tuesday evening. At Sherman's School, we thank them for hosting us and letting us use their air-conditioned media center rather than the APR, which was not air-conditioned. There was about, my first count, about 85 people from the public that were there. I thank you all for attending. I apologize for the late start of the meeting again, and what we basically did was start to build a framework on redistricting guidelines and principles. We have another meeting a week from this Thursday to finalize those and bring them to the board for the October 20th, or was it 24th meeting or 20th?
20th.
October 20th meeting. So, that will, that will be my goal before I leave the board, is to bring that framework to the 20th meeting, approved by the subcommittee for the full board to take a look at and proceed on as they wish.
Okay. So, you'll make sure that the motion that you pass, or whatever the recommended motion is, gets to Meg Brown in a timely fashion, so she can get it on the agenda and get it out five days before the meeting, which is virtually...
The next day.
The next day. Mr. Llewellyn?
Point of clarification. So, this will come before us as a voting item without prior discussion? In other words, there'll be no first read?
No.
It'll come for voting, or will it just be presented for voting at the following meeting?
Unless it's an emergency, our bylaws say that we should not take action on one meeting, so I presume it would be a first read.
Okay. That would just clarify, thank you.
Yeah. Is that, not raising your hand?
I want to look.
Scratching, they're scratching.
I'm looking at Mr. Patton. Any other questions for the redistricting committee? Okay. Mr. Fadabean, on transportation.
Oh, you're so, you presume it's on transportation, and it is.
Since, since I got three very thoughtful...
I appreciate that. Yeah, I'd like to want to report that I, that there were three referrals to the Transportation Safety Advisors. As, as a member of that body, I submitted my recommendation and vote for the three referrals, and I'm glad to say those will likely be the last decisions I will have to make in all likelihood, with respect to transportation.
For the public that is remaining here at the moment, Mr. Fadabean takes his charge with this committee very seriously, he does, and studies it, goes, looks at the site, looks at our board policy... at our board policies, and comes up with a thoughtful response. So when, when somebody says, well, they just dump it in the dumper, in the hopper, and, and they just support whatever the administration originally had, that's not the case. Mr. Fadabean takes this very serious, so I thank you. And I still think I'm going to find a way to make you a permanent representative to this committee.
Another amendment to those bylaws.
Any, 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 well, now we'll need six votes in order to change the bylaws. Any other committee liaison reports? Open board comment, open board comment, starting over here this time? Any? Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Confortito, one, two, three? Wait, 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 wait. At your, at your, I'll just make one comment. The CAPE registration form is here. While we may have registered a certain number of board members to actually go to this event, there is still information that you have to submit for either hotel or workshops that you want to go. So please pay attention to this so that Meg doesn't have to chase you down. Motion to adjourn?
I want one comment about that CAPE event.
Yes.
Even though I think I was forwarded by email a reservation or whatever, my assumption is that that's going to be for a new board member.
Correct. We made-
Well, they just sent, it was sent to me. Yeah.
Yes. We made a certain number of reservations for the conference so that we could get in on the-
Right, right. I understand that. I just wanted to mention, and I guess I just want to mention that clearly it seems like that the district is paying now so that, so the time in which I'm not going to attend the CAPE conference is the, is the time in which the district has decided to fund it. I'm just making an observation. Is there any coincidence to that?
The recommended motion is that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn. All in favor? First, you, you moved and, you moved and you seconded. Whatever. Please raise your hand so I know it's unanimous. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.